All right, since you can't hear us, we're good for roll call. We could not hear you if you were trying to do it.
Okay, Mayor Riechel?
Here.
Mayor Protam Knott?
Here.
Trustee Britnall?
Here.
Trustee Klassen?
Here.
Trustee Flores? Yeah, I saw him sign in. Trustee Hanrahan, Trustee Seepert?
Here.
All right, and yeah, just for the record, Trustee Flores is joined with us on Zoom.
I'm here.
Okay.
And I'm, thank you.
All right, can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated. First item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make public comments on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items?
No, I did not hear from anyone today, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands.
Okay. Town administrator, can you look at the list and see if anyone's signed in?
Mark?
Hey, no, I turned it off before I even went on.
All right. Nobody in the chambers has signed in to do public comments either, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. It contains the minutes of the July 11th, 2022 Board of Trustees Meeting and the renewal of the hotel and restaurant liquor license for Burning Mountain Pizza and Subs. Anyone like to discuss either one of those?
I have a quick question. Is Burning Mountain up to date on all their sales tax?
They are up to date and there have been no issues with the licensee as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Protam Knott to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by Trustee Britnall. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
No, ma'am.
No.
Nope. None here.
All right, and I've got none either. Do we have any agenda changes for staff or the board tonight?
None from us.
Not from me?
Yep.
Sam, any agenda changes?
No, I was, I'd say something on the comments or comments at the end.
Okay, sounds good. Then we'll move right along here to the Rizlinda Planned Unit Development Rezoning and Subdivision Sketch Plan, AKA the Divide Creek Center PUD, and this is a continued discussion from the July 11th, 2022 Board of Trustees Meeting. Perhaps you want to jump up to the table, and then we'll turn this over to Planner Jane.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll see tonight, we bifurcated this discussion into two parts. The first, I'd like to see if you have any other concerns about zoning in the sketch plan, and if not, make motions for approval or approval with conditions. And then the longer discussion item of the night is basically a breakout of things to be changed in the amended restated annexation and development agreement. And Attorney Sawyer will be doing the leading through most of that. Don't really have much to say about the rezoning. I think we've discussed most of the issues. And a lot of the discussion actually revolved around trail connections and things like that. One thing that I did ask you to do, and Sheila, can I take over the screen here? This will stop other screen sharing.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, here we go. Can we see this?
Almost, there we go.
There we go, okay. Site plan review. Since most of the heavy lifting for this project will be done at the site plan review stage, I have suggested that the board be the final decision-making body for the site plan review, and that's not how it usually is in the talent code. Planning Commission is the decision-making body. You be, you get into the mix if there's an appeal of the entire decision, such as a denial or a condition. We've talked about that with the applicant, and I think they agree with that, and that is noted in the, in the development agreement. I'm just noting here, here's the, the phasing and development schedule, and I do want to let you know that I had one mistake in the height. I said the multifamily area did not have prescribed height, and that is wrong. It is 25 feet. I cut and pasted this from a previous report. Doug pointed that out to me a while ago, and then I, this is in here by mistake. I'm sorry, what? Thirty-five. What did I say?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay. Because there are, there is a zone district here with a 25-foot height, and that's the event center. There are two areas with 40-foot height, but I believe that's okay for reasons that I went over before. One's the event center and one's for the commercial mixed-use area. In the rest of the report, I just had the quick summary. It's 160 residential units. I touched on building height and the maximum non-residential potential. Maximum building size, by the way, is 30,000 square feet. And I think we have gone through and have at least agreement with staff and the applicants on a number of the path connections and dedication, it's points, et cetera. I went over the findings with you before. It does meet the PUD approval criteria. And my recommendation, I think the PUD is well-conceived, meets the town approval criteria for PUDs and appears to protect the town as development would proceed. It also provides a new amenity to the area and brings a great benefit to the town. I recommend approval to the board, that they approve the PUD application with the following conditions. One, that the PUD guide be reworked to be a standalone document, which be included as an exhibit in one of the approval documents. Number two, we've discussed that, well, partially, the site plan and lot coverage be reworked as part of the PUD guide so that their importance is retained for the project in case the underlying Silt Municipal Code sections are amended or eliminated. Three, that in order to protect the town, that under change of ownership by reason of default death or other such means, that the event center is considered critical and still will be required to be developed in conformance with the proposed development phasing schedule as shown in the application. Four, that a mutually agreeable, appropriate vested rights timeframe be included in the final development agreement, and I think we have concurrence between staff and the applicant. Five, that the area indicated as PUD river zone be dedicated to the town as part of the subdivision approval. Once again, I believe that the applicant is in concurrence with that. Any other conditions that you would note as part of this discussion tonight? And seven, that the PUD guide include the site plan review process, that the board have the final decision-making power. And let me just hit on the sketch plan real quickly. I think the sketch plan has gone quite well, and it should. This, this area was, been studied for development for a while. There've been at least two development plans. They had a full subdivision requirement, so it's appropriate to be subdivided. The access plan is generally the same as it was before. The general infrastructure works. The town has sufficient water and wastewater for the area. It's identified the hazards and other areas of constraints, and most importantly, it's, the land is suitable for, for subdivision. At the planning commission level, one of the biggest discussions was, should the main frontage road be relocated, or at least access for this development be located parallel to where the frontage is now, but closer to the river, and after discussion, it was thought that that was not a good idea, and it's better access points where they have proposed right now. And for the subdivision sketch plan, you know, I recommend that the board accept a sketch plan, and the board direct the applicant and development team to move forward with a preliminary plat application, and with any changes or direction you want to provide to staff, planning commission, et cetera. And before I turn it over to you, since this is, they may make final motions tonight, is there anything that I said in there you would like to address, Doug or Mitchell?
No, it was just the 35 feet for the height limit that we discussed earlier.
And I would just note, I have one kind of reframing of what Mark has said. And so the sketch plan approval, you can make a motion and approve that. Sketch plan is not even really done by resolution. It's just simply a voice vote, and you can, as Mark indicated, provide any feedback as part of your motion on the sketch plan that you desire. The PUD zoning, that is an approval that's implemented by an ordinance. And so as opposed to approving the, the PUD zoning today, my recommendation is that you would direct staff to come back to you with an ordinance for the PUD zoning that includes the conditions that Mark has articulated. And then you will be continuing the public hearing for the PUD zoning to the next meeting, at which time we will come back to you with the ordinance for your formal consideration.
Got it.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is it us now? I have a que, I just have like one, one thing to discuss really quick, and you could tell me if this needs to go into the next section. But as I read this, and part of the conditions, is I see that, you know, the area indicated as PUZ River Zone be dedicated to the town as part of the subdivision approval. It's the river. What, what, what good does that do us to own the river? Or the land where the river runs on? What's the point of that?
Well, I think it's very important for the town. That's your main, your main drinking source, and you want to protect that. And I think the future in river towns in western Colorado, you know, they'll be embracing the river for at least as long as we have the Colorado River. And I think it's a very important thing for you to have in your possession. The other thing, there was a change in this application before that island was going to be dedicated to the town, and this is sort of a quid pro quo.
With the river. So the, the original annexation contemplated that the river, the bed of the river would be owned by the town.
Okay.
And so that is a perpetuation of the original conditions of annexation. The scope of what is being dedicated to the town is proposed to be changed due to the unique event center nature of the Rizlinda development. And we can, we intend to talk more about that. We certainly can bump that up in our timing to, to discuss that now because, as trustee Knott appropriately notes, if you're giving direction to staff in terms of the content of the PUD zoning ordinance, that might be relevant to the direction that you give.
Okay.
We certainly can have that discussion. I believe that the applicants are prepared to provide you with an overview of land's dedication and a discussion about what is coming to the town, including the river.
Okay, right. And then just to be further clear about that, we're obviously not getting any sort of dedication of the water that's in the river for this, just the land itself, so.
The town took as dedication at the time of the original annexation, three shares in the Lower Cactus Valley Ditch. Those were the water rights that were pertinent to that property. The town owns those today.
Yep.
But in terms of the water in the river itself, no, there's no dedication of that because frankly, that water is owned by the public, not, not by the applicant.
Right, right, yep, okay.
Any further questions from anyone?
Oh, maybe, we'll see. Do you have any?
I guess for our attorney, I mean, I'm going back to the pedestrian bridge underneath the, the road. Does that need to be discussed in the ARADA, or does that need to be in the PUD? Because in the ARADA, it's an easement dedication, which in my mind is, they're going to dedicate the land to the town. If the town ever wants that put in, we're paying for it to be done.
So I think that the dedication of land and the construction of, of a trail is not really a zoning issue. It's not what you can build vertically on the property. Rather, it is a condition of annexation, and that is, again, a topic that we intend to discuss with the board as part of the ARADA.
Okay, all right.
Got it.
And would that also go along with access points to the dedicated land?
Dedication of easements and property will be part of the ARADA discussion. So the, the zoning, you know, conceptually to think about is what can you do on the land as an owner, a developer? The ARADA or the terms of the deal to get the property annexed and, and so.
Okay. As far as the zoning of the, the parcels go, I think those are, are what they should be for this project.
Right, okay.
Serves me sense.
And everything else, I think I have questions about as part of the, the annexation agreement, so.
Okay, I'm, I get that. And then as far as like if you look on the map towards track eight, where they have it listed still as the active parkland and the passive parkland, fine with where that's listed at for the rezoning, right? Yeah, down here. So if you kind of go back and look, right, so like active parkland would be like ball fields, soccer fields, basketball courts, et cetera, et cetera, and then the passive parkland is just going to be kind of like open space, right? Being, you know, grassy area, picnic area, et cetera, so. Per the zoning, it looks like we would just be approving for those areas to be right in that section, so. Granted, we're going to talk about some other access points and easements, but I think it's important to note that that's where those are listed on the zoning, so.
Yeah, and those.
There's an, yeah, there's another version on here. Should we be looking at the?
So, yeah.
Oh, there is? Oh, hold on. So I'm looking at the zoning diagram.
Yeah, so those.
You have to scroll past the ARADA agreement discussion.
Yeah, that map. So those, those park parcels have gone.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, sorry, I thought I was looking at the wrong one, so let's see which one do I need to look at?
It's 37.
Yeah.
Page 37, yeah.
Got it, okay, let me get there really quick.
So yeah, so that's no longer parkland. The parkland is.
Ah, got it. Okay, I'm sorry about that, guys.
Became the river bottom and a pocket park.
Okay, let me just get there really quick.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Mark, do you want me to put that map up from the packet?
Yeah, please, please.
Is that the one you want?
Yes.
No, that's the old one.
It's the old.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that was the one that I was mistakenly looking at.
Page 37, Sheila.
Page 37.
There we go.
There we go.
And I have to go back to this because I'm trying to wrap my head around it. I, I still like really want to understand what the benefit to the town is of owning where that river is and, and how that helps our town long-term. Now, Mark, I understand what you mean as far as like us being a river town. We pull our drinking water out of that river, and that's, you know, we clean, we'll be able to do that regardless whether or not we own this piece of land where the river is. Now, if we go to, so if we fast forward, say, 15 years, and then this thing's completely built out and done, and we've got people living there, we've got a cool event center, and it's just a great little area, what changes between how that river is used right now versus then in 15 years for the people that want to use that river? I don't know that it does, does it? Because we wouldn't control any of the shoreline as it goes to their property per se if it's not listed as, you know, parkland or dedicated to us. It could still just be private property, and they could stick no trespassing signs up there, and people got to float right by it. So I just want to know what good it does to the town. I, I get that it's an asset, but I mean, really, for people of Silt, where's the benefit?
It's not a soccer field. It's not a baseball field. It's not.
I just think that.
It's not even open space.
Yeah, I just want to know.
Because technically, the river's the river. You can float on it whether this is there or not. You just can't access it from the land.
I think that's where I'm going with it, you know what I mean? I don't know if that's a question for Attorney Sawyer, if that's for Planner Jane, maybe for the applicants here on, you know, it, and I'm not saying it is, but it almost looks like, hey, here's an easy thing to give, let's, let's do it, you know? Like, we can't do anything with it. Let's, let's let them have it. I just don't know what the benefit is to us.
Hey, this is Trustee Flores. I, I know on like the White River, there are certain spots where you can't touch the bottom of the river. You can't, you can't wade in and fish because it's privately owned. I don't know if this has any relation to that.
Trustee Flores is correct that there are potential limitations when the bottom of the river is privately owned. The town, as long as I have been a town attorney and before when I was representing landowners sitting at the applicant's table that owned property along the river, the town's policy has been to acquire the river bed to ensure that public boating and, and recreation in that area is not in any way impeded.
Okay.
When the town historically had annexed the Stillwater property, which is no longer, you know, a development within the town, but that development required dedication of river bottom lands to the town, as well as the KOA Camp Colorado, the town took ownership of the, the river bottom. So this is an extension of a policy that the town's had in place for a couple of decades to ensure that those public benefits aren't harmed in the future. Legally speaking, there, there are certain limits that could come into play in terms of what the public can do in the bed of the river if it's privately owned versus if it's publicly owned. Town can ensure that those benefits are, are continuing.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't we have discussion last meeting of, of, yeah, of the river as dedicated in addition to some funds?
That, that is one of the discussion points that we want to have with the applicant today, which is the, how the town weighs kind of the parkland dedication requirements against things that the applicant is proposing to give to the town, which in this instance, as you can see from the diagram that's up on the screen, the river bottom, a couple of, of easements, access easements to get down there, and another recreational benefit that the applicant will talk about is, is the trail system along the frontage road. But you are correct, Chris, that the, there, there has been a discussion about exactly how to weigh those dedications, and that, that is one of the primary reasons why we wanted to come to you and have a discussion about the annexation agreement to see how the deal points that we have been talking about with the applicant, how they stack up against your expectations.
Got it.
Maybe we should just go into the discussion on the agreement. That seems most of the questions.
We certainly can, so long as we circle back to take action on the zoning and the sketch plan, yeah. So we don't have to take a vote on the zoning and the sketch plan right now. We can move to the annexation agreement discussion. We just need to remember to come back to that by the conclusion of the agenda item.
I'm okay with that. Are you okay with that?
Do we need to make a motion to like suspend that discussion after, or just jump to it and jump back?
Just have a discussion, and we'll, the mayor, with his keen mind, will make sure we don't forget.
If you go back, it's not checked off the list yet, so we will go back to it.
It's not checked off. It didn't happen.
It didn't happen, yeah. Okay.
So what, what we were thinking in terms of guiding, well, or processing the discussion today, in your packet, there is a somewhat lengthy chart that outlines the, kind of the substantive provisions in the existing annexation agreement. And then it has in the middle column, the proposal from the applicant, and then in the final column, it, it has commentary or language from the town's staff as to how each of those provisions would be handled. I would note that on a large majority of the items in the annexation agreement from the staff standpoint, I think we are on the same page as the applicant. There's, there's really not been much controversy or discussion. There are a few things that, again, I think the applicant has ideas about how they would like to proceed, and obviously you, as the decision-makers, will provide your guidance as to how we draft up the annexation agreement. I think the, probably the most efficient way to proceed would be to allow the applicants to give about a 10-minute presentation about big picture issues related to the annexation and their, their thinking, and then we can work through the chart kind of on a issue-by-issue basis and answer questions that you have, or take direction about language that needs to be changed, and we'll just kind of work our way down through the chart, if that's acceptable to you.
I think that's a good way to do it.
Sounds good, yeah. Turn us over to the applicant.
May I share my screen?
Sheila?
Sheila, can I?
Still can't.
Sheila, did you hear the request to share the screen Doug had?
Yes, I have.
Okay. I just, I couldn't, just wasn't sure if you heard that.
Okay, thank you.
Has he been made a co-host, Amy?
I just did that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's one of those three. I don't have a preview to pick which one, so if I get the wrong one, hopefully it's, hopefully it's okay.
Safer work.
Let's see. Mark, can you just go ahead and share the, or Sheila, can you share page 35 again? Is that, is that the one it was?
37.
37, sorry. It's not letting me share, so I'm sorry.
Do you want me to bring it up, Mark?
Yes, because I got kicked off of Zoom just.
Sorry, you guys. Usually it's easy.
That one, Doug?
Yes, thanks. So Sheila, I'm going to ask you to zoom over to the left side along County Road 311, just so people can see it a little bit better. Just so people can see it a little bit better, if you can just enlarge it. Yeah, you might have to enlarge it and then pan over that way. Okay, that's good, thanks, like scroll down a tiny bit, sorry. Yep, there you go, so, um, I'm gonna walk through some discussion points that I think we had, you guys might have to remember. Or remind me if I miss a few things, but for the most part, on this drawing, I highlighted everything in green. That we talked about the last time, so, I wanted to point out on this drawing that on the. East side of County Road three eleven, which is on the very west side of our property. We have a fifteen foot easement for a trail that goes from. On the intersection of County Road eleven and the frontage road, all the way down to the river parcel which will be. Owned if that's where we go by the town, so this would give pedestrian bike access. Down to the river parcel along County Road three eleven, it also gives access to. A potential future bridge, um, underpass uh, under the bridge for a trail. I know Mark has some comments about the underpass, he went out and sat under the bridge for a half an hour and kind of looked at it. Um, contemplated life and mosquitoes, I think, um, and. We've all kind of taken a look at it, so feeling the feasibility of that, that underpass with the current bridge might be very difficult. We're proposing that there's a path that would get down to the river at that location. And it would be a path that is designed and built by the applicant, uh, in, in appropriate phasing. And with that, pedestrians would be able to access the river on that path, so that is the goal of that fifteen foot easement. It's a fifteen foot easement and it is a path down to the river. So across the north side of that parcel, um, you can kind of see it labeled down in the very corner, east trail access, and then there's some details that. Roger did at High Country Engineering kind of showing an eight percent grade path that gets down to the river, but. Keep on this, uh, this slide right here. At the north side of the parcel, we have a fifteen foot easement for the regional trail that we've been discussing. So that fifteen foot easement runs across the entire length of the property over to B L M. We do have commitments to put a path. If, if we can't get a B L M easement, we would have to work with, with the right of way to, to put the trail in the right of way. But either way, we would be looking at the same regional trail that crosses, um, the entire north side of this property. The north side of B L M and then the triangle of land that's over on the, on the far east side, so. I'm gonna tell you that the combination of those trails are, are, uh, on the property is one point two acres. And this goes to our parkland dedication. Um, there's point two acres which we would have to get easement from on B L M or access to right of way. So that's one point four acres total that we want to utilize as active parkland for this project. So part of our discussion, I think, was related to river and parkland. But that number, one point four acres is, is a requirement, um, that we're looking to commit, uh, one point four acres for active parkland, so. I'm, I'm gonna do some math, so the entire requirement for this project for active parkland. The entire requirement for parkland is two point nine acres, so that. Of seven acres of parkland per one thousand residents, so that's in your code, so we're not. That's not part of our P, we didn't write that, that's in your code, that's a requirement, seven acres of parkland for, per one thousand residents. So with that, with the residents that we have proposed in this, we're required two point nine acres of parkland. So that's the requirement that we're shooting for. Of that, eighty percent needs to be active parkland, twenty percent can be passive parkland. So that is two point three acres of active parkland and point six acres of passive parkland, so. Um, those numbers are also important. So of that two point three acre requirement of active parkland, we have one point four acres. Proposed with the trail system on this project, so we have an additional point nine acres of parkland that we need to. Dedicate to, for this project, so, that being said. We have point six acres of passive parkland that we would like credit for dedicating the. Twelve, oh, now I can't remember the exact acreage, twelve acres of river. We would like point six acres of credit for the river, twelve acre dedication. Uh, to satisfy passive parkland for this project, so we'll still have two point three acres of active. We want point six acres of passive parkland associated with the twelve acres of ri- river that'll be dedicated to the town. So I, I know this is a lot of, a lot of math, but it's coming out of the code and I think I've got it right so far, so. We need point nine acres of additional parkland, so when you're asking about. Dedication of fees for parkland, cash and lieu for fee, for parkland. Um, when plans come in for site plan review for this project. Um, for instance, um, lot one has potential of seventy two units proposed for it. Parkland will be required for that based on seventy two units and two point five people per unit. So, that parkland will need to be associated with that portion of the project, like in this case on lot one. If for instance, that developer in this place, in this case it's Dennis Carruth who we've been talking to. Uh, or who owns a project, but he's been talking here to you. If he chooses to build parkland on that project, it would be dedicated per that ratio. If he chooses to do cash and lieu, it would be dedicated based on the formula that's in your code, so. There's an option to put parkland in those tracks or to do cash and lieu in those tracks and. I think it's still in the ARADA, but we propose that. You could only do cash and lieu up to fifty percent of, of the parkland, so. We wanted to see some parkland on those tracks when there's residential development on it. So somebody could do fifty percent parkland and fifty percent cash and lieu, so. That, that all comes down into the matrix that I think you'll be looking at, but I kind of wanted to show you the graphics. And Sheila, if you'll pan over to the right, um, all the way kind of towards the, uh, east side of the project. Um, yeah, keep on, yeah, right there and, uh. You were there, it looks like it jumped back over. So on the east side of the project, you're, you're asking about the dedication of the river. I did wanna let you know that the dedication of that river parcel includes. The toe of slope that goes down to the river below B L M, so while that's. A steep toe of slope, there's the ability to pull, I mean, if, if the water's low in that area, you could pull a boat up. Onto the low water area, um, that, that six hundred and sixty feet of land that fronts the river right there. Will be owned by the town, so, when you were asking about, we won't be able to get out on the land, that's six hundred and sixty feet. You will be able to get out on the land, it's to the toe of slope of the B L M land, but that will be part of the river parcel. So you can kind of see the topo, you can kind of see the dashed line, that's kind of the water line and then there's topo beyond that. That's just below the B L M property line, so that six hundred and sixty feet, you will have ri- river access onto the shore at that location. And then the little triangle of land that's up to the top that is just east of the B L M land. That is where we've done a diagram showing trail access down to the river as well, so there would be trail access. And that triangle on the east side and then over by the bridge on the west side, so that, that we just looked at prior to this. So Sheila, if you scroll down to the bottom corner of the, straight down to the bottom corner of this diagram. Those two drawings, the triangle, that piece right there is the path that's leading down the triangle. And Roger Neil looked at that, it's an eight, it's an eight percent, it's a one in twelve grade, so it's an eight point three three percent path. That goes down, so, I thought at one point we would need steps and, and it looks like we can get down to the path at that location. Um, with, uh, with eight point three percent grade, so. Actually scroll down a little bit more Sheila, actually, so I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. The top one is the bridge, so that's an eight point three percent grade, the bottom one is the triangle, I'm sorry, there's triangles on both of them, so I apologize. So the bottom one is the triangle of land that's on the east side, that's an eight point three percent grade. And the top one is the la- is a path that goes down to the bridge and eight point three percent grade. So both of those, um, have the ability to have a, an eight percent path that goes down to the river in both of those locations. So it's, you know, we had light art topo in those locations, Roger took a look at the grades and just kind of put a diagram together to demonstrate the grades on that path. So, that shows you the river access, both of them go to the, to the actual, um, property line of the river. Um, and down to, uh, the, the ordinary water line of the river. We have the path along the north side, um, we have the path along, uh, the west side, east of County Road three eleven, so in total. We're dedicating. Two point three acres, um, of active parkland, point six acres of passive parkland. The, the point nine acres is what needs to get dedicated if the site plan review level, each of the, the parcels that come in. So I'm sorry, that was long, but I'm hoping it made sense. So that's kind of the precursor, I guess, to a lot of the parkland stuff that's in the annexation and development agreement.
And one, and one of the things that, that Doug did in addition to all those other numbers, came up with the ratio. Of the remainder, which is something like ninety four square feet, right, per person? So as we now come to you, you know, next year beyond, with like those individual site plans. You should be expecting something around ninety four square feet per max person. Right, on each of those lots, to know that over the course of the whole thing, you're gonna get what you. Expect and deserve, right? So that'll, that'll be sort of our, our guide going forward.
So I, I, I think in light of, uh. All the parkland issues being freshly described now is, even though it's not the first item on the. Table that we've prepared, probably makes sense to have that discussion and. You can ask questions, we can, Mark and I can take notes and, and. See if we can get to a position from you. Uh, that we can then implement into a, a document to bring back to you.
So I'd like to share just a couple thoughts that I have with the board and then the applicants and the staff. Uh, as I, and thank, like, that was very informative, so I appreciate that, it was good, so. Now, when we look at whatever thirty five to forty acres of land here that we're looking at. Developing over the next course of, you know, ten or fifteen years or whatever that might be, and we're talking about parkland dedication, right, so we're looking for. Space that, you know, the current and future residents of Silt that won't live in this development. Can still use as good parkland, so I understand that. The trail and the paths all account for some passive and active parkland. The one thing that I think it's missing though is just the fact that it's not. A nice open area for people to go enjoy, and I'll give you an example, so. I have a thirteen year old son and I have an eight year old daughter. And they like to go do different things with some of their friends sometimes together, right, and sometimes they like to go down to a park and. Play basketball, I like to go to a big park with their friends and throw the football and throw the baseball around, that sort of thing, so. I'm not gonna take my kids and go drop them off on a trail system that goes down to the river. Right, so for a large group of citizens, there's not really. You know, a beneficial parkland in this proposal to that group, it's a, it's a good benefit to the people that. Do like to go on trails and do like to take some walks and wanna go down and enjoy the river, you know, but kids younger than. Fourteen or fifteen really shouldn't be going down there, in my opinion, you know what I mean, unsupervised. So I think it's just lacking that part, you know, your, your math is right, you know, you, you've got the space there. I just don't know if it's all the right space of what we would really be looking for, you know, as it comes to just parkland that the town's gonna own. Does that make sense?
Yeah, can, can we interact a little bit or how do you wanna do it?
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I do wanna say that the point nine acres, which, which I know is. A little less than an acre.
Yeah.
Has the opportunity, so when parks are developed with each of those neighborhoods that are within this project. Those will be public easements, so those will be accessible from, if kids wanna come play in those parks, play whatever they might become. If they're a playground, if they're a field, if they're a ball court, you know, of some kind. So that, so that point nine acres, um, will be available. In addition to everything that we just described related to the river for, for parkland associated with this project.
Yeah, so, and, so I'll, I'll kind of go with you on that, so, so a lot of what. Our discussions have been in the past, and then we have a Parks and Recreation Subcommittee too, is. That with the growth of the town, which is great, we lack certain facilities, uh, for example, soccer fields. We are so, like, our soccer fields are just jam packed, uh, baseball fields, uh, we only have one. Baseball field in the town, basketball courts, right, so. The town had taken over a, a, a youth sports program, uh, this year. You know, kind of working through that and then we work with some other like Little League and that sort of things, and there is a constant struggle. To find enough sports recreational fields for everybody to use, we run out, so we have people from Silt have to drive to rifle. Or they have to go to Newcastle, worst case scenario, we've had families from Silt have to go to parachute. To practice, right, because everybody comes home from school, comes home from work and that's when all these little teams can practice, it's only from. Four P M to eight thirty P M when it gets dark, so we run out of all that space, so we're looking at an opportunity of. Forty acres of space down here, and it would be great to have that option. To provide that to the rest of the town.
Yeah, one, one quick, uh, adjustment there, the whole parcel is. Just shy of fifty one acres, but that includes the river.
Yeah, yeah, so I tried not to include the river, which I think is fifteen, so maybe forty acres?
That's seventeen, I have seventeen developable acres.
Okay.
And, and then Dennis Carruth has three and a half or something like that, so that's really what's developable.
Twenty, so you're saying twenty, twenty acres?
Yeah, yeah, just as one point, yeah.
Yeah, how big's a twelve youth soccer field, it's not that big. So, we, 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 we need recreational space that way for the youth in the town. So, when I look at that, that's what I'm thinking, so, if we can get around that, maybe we can get around that, I don't know what the thoughts are of the rest of the board, I mean, I. The trail system's great, we appreciate that, that was very thoughtful getting down to the river, so I see the benefit to that. I'm looking for the other side of it too, because it's a constant struggle that we have right now.
Well, here's, just kind of something that, it is something that I thought of and I talked to past Development Director. Years and years ago was, we, we just recently have. Scraped the idea of a trail from Silt to Colridge around Davis Point because it's just not feasible.
Right, and we got wetland, yeah, the whole thing.
With, the, part of this trail system and maybe a commitment of helping to finance building some additional along that area, sorry. Currently with it going, people from the town and from those department subdivision stuff could come under the underpass, under the interstate and whatnot.
Yeah.
To access this trail system.
Sure, yep.
Could go, and granted, they'd be going past Colridge, but they could go past to that bridge that goes across and then cut back to Colridge.
Right.
Now granted, I, they wouldn't expect them to pay for all of that because some of that's county, it's other stuff. But that would be a way that that trail system would be used by a bigger majority of people.
To get to those.
And it kind of takes care of that thing that we've looked at in the past with the high school.
Sure.
And, and again, like I said, it is a little bit of a, it's, it'd be an extra. I don't know the distance exactly, cause I haven't gone out and mapped it and see exactly what it was, I just looked at it real quick. But across the front of there, you, you, it would be much easier to build the trail along that frontage road of, um, already there.
Yeah.
And then that bridge is much less used, so it'd be much safer for people to go over that bridge and then cut back to the high school. And that's just a way of possibly helping that be a little bit more.
That's a good point, I haven't thought about that, it's a good angle for sure.
And, but again, maybe in some of the, and that's where in some of that parkland monies versus space. Would be to help pay to build the trail in that easement that you could get along there, to get that built further, to get some of that done.
Yeah, yeah, fair point.
Yeah, my. Another side of the coin, uh, this is Trusty Flores, another side of the coin is, uh, I understand the need for youth sports. However, um, there is a need for trails. Um, trails are used year round, youth sports facilities, you have a game. Weekends in the summertime and then, there's really, I live next to a soccer park and there's really no, there's hardly, uh, there's minimal use during the. Any other time, whereas a trail gets used quite a bit. And it actually brings people to town, this, uh, mountain biking, runners. All those kind of sports.
It's true.
I can see both sides of it, but I look at it as, if this was a neighborhood being built, would we count sidewalks? As parkland?
No.
Cause that's what I view it, a trail as. Cause that's what I view a, a trail as, a trail as a sidewalk, just cause it's
A fifteen-foot wide trail?
Fifteen-foot wide trail, I don't know.
I guess that's a fifteen-foot easement, don't know what the trail would be.
The trails, I don't know if I consider that a active parkland at all, rather than just infrastructure.
Yeah, I wonder if that's kinda maybe where I was going with that, I suppose, just with the way it's being, you know, put as parkland? You know? So, yeah, and I guess my point went to like that usable parkland.
Parkland.
You know?
Yeah, um, we did have a discussion at the last meeting about cost of maintaining parkland, and this gives us space that comes at a low cost of of maintenance also.
I know I wasn't here for that last meeting and that discussion, but I would almost take the additional cost of maintaining a park and just I think that that would be a moot point, and my, my point there is, the town's growing, more people are moving here, we've got more tax revenue, you know what I'm saying? So like, yeah, I get it, like, as these things grow, it, it does cost more for us to maintain, but our facilities and our Public Works Department grows with that. You know what I mean? So I think that that's okay.
I agree.
But that's how I would view that.
I just agree too, if we had a second baseball field, you host a, a weekend tournament, you bring fifty teams to town, and those people spend money in town. Then it, it offsets that.
For sure.
That cost. And I just had a, a question, so previously, the, the river PUD went two-thirds of the way to the west of Track Six. And now it's been moved clear to the corner of Track Seven. You know, it, it made sense to me, if you're using that river, that you're gonna walk the bank potentially all the way down to the island and then recognize that the island is private property, but now we've got this. You walk past the BLM, half the river is still private, half of it's public. How do you know where you can walk down that, that line without stepping on the wrong side of the river?
So to clarify, that, that green line goes to what was on our survey label is, is the Colorado River, which is kind of the water's edge, so. So, so while the water's edge in the channel through the island is not part of the blue that's dedicated to, um, the town, though it's from the water's edge down into the river to the center line of the river where the property line is, that is dedicated. Like I said, below the BLM, it's everything to the property line. Yeah, so, that, that was the line, um, we, we're trying to call it the Ordinary Water Line.
Ordinary Water, okay, yeah. Alright, that, that was on the plan, so that was just a modification from the original.
And, and this is something, I don't know, we have to spend a bunch of time on it, but I, I do want the board to feel comfortable or at least understand why that, the line of where the river is being dedicated to changes, and you see it over at the BLM property, that that jogs to the south of that location, and that is, when the BLM property was platted, uh, the parcel that was sold to, uh, the developer, the BLM property, uh, they, they only got from what's called the high-water mark on up. And due to the unique nature of what Mitchell is trying to do with this property, which is to have this event center and to be able to, you know, reasonably control what happens on the river's bank, uh, when events are going on. The discussion has been that, as opposed to being the, the, uh, high-water mark, that we would use the ordinary line of the river.
So I'm kinda looking at this to your, so really you've got three, four, five, six, eight acres of residential. Right? So if we did, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, if we tried to find more land or find someplace to put a park or whatever, we're kinda limited, cause you wouldn't put it on the event center and you wouldn't put it in commercial. So you'd somehow have to put it somewhere in those. You know, I'm just thinking out loud, you know, if we're trying to find more area, cause like I say, I know we said seventeen, but really you've only got three, four, five, six, eight acres of residential, per se.
Yeah, and something to keep in mind is you almost need just as much space for parking as you do for the field.
Yeah, and I don't know, like, I'm not trying to get like-
No, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud here, but, you know, if we did try and find something, cause you wouldn't put it in the events and sure, we wanna put it in the commercials, so somewhere you'd have to try and re, somehow between those three parcels.
I don't know, that really depends on how the buildings lay out on the commercial mixed-use, it could be beneficial to put a park near that for people potentially shopping with kids at, at those facilities to go, go use them also.
But you'd wanna keep it close to residential, so you have to cross, I mean, I'm just looking at the access, that trail, I guess, yeah.
I think it's pretty safe to assume that with Track One, there will be an onsite park in that residential area, I think that's, you know, something that we'll, we'll put in the agreement, but where the other, I mean, how much of that point nine will be there, I don't know. I'm not sure I'm on board with the trail being parkland. I don't know how anyone else feels about that.
I think that's the point I was just trying to make, you know? Yeah, I don't know why we're having such a hard time figuring out parkland with this, you know?
I guess, I guess there's the alternative, I mean, you can have a park that has active play facilities, you can have a linear park that has active facilities. It's running, jogging, dog walking, you know, whatever the case, bike riding, whatever the case may be. I mean, so we're looking at the amount of activity that can happen on that trail, and there is activity that happens on those trails. It's not passive, it is active, but it's a linear park, I mean, it's a park that runs linearly along, along the entire project, and it accesses linearly to the river, so it's not a dedicated two-point-nine acre park. Um, it is a linear park that takes up about half of the active parkland that's required, and the other pieces are gonna get distributed amongst the parcels when they get developed, so. I, I know it, it is kind of a crystal ball thing, there is, I, I went through the math to let you know, these aren't numbers that are to be determined, they're numbers that are in your code. I think the other issue related with the amount of parkland for this project is that there is an event center, as you said, there, there is about eight acres that is, uh, that is residential. That eight acres has a capacity to have, at the maximum, four hundred and sixteen residents. So that's, if you have two-point-five residents per multifamily, um, mixed-use residential building, three-point-five residents per single-family building, that cap is four hundred and sixteen for this project. So that's the amount of parkland that we're trying to accommodate for four hundred and sixteen residents in this project, and that's the, that's the code requirement. So that's, that's the math that I kinda gave you what it's based on.
Would this trail along the north side, would it be landscaped?
Um, I, I, it would have to be vegetated, so we, we would have to re-vegetate. So what, so the fifteen-foot easement, it would, it would, um, be an eight-foot trail that probably is on a ten-foot platform, so there's probably a gravel shoulder on either side of that. So that's, leaves two and a half feet each for drainage on either side of the trail. So not a lot of room, can't plant trees and shrubs in two and a half feet, you know, so it'll be re-vegetated in that two and a half feet. So yes, it'll have vegetation on it, but I think the front of this project, much like you've seen in other projects in town, when people come in for site plan review, you'd wanna, wanna make sure you have streetscape and landscape, you know, that goes up to that easement. But within the actual easement, there's about two and a half feet on either side that, you know, is really for drainage.
Cause yeah, that was just my thought, if it's gonna kinda be a linear park, you know, is it gonna have trees and stuff like that?
It's gonna be an eight-foot path with gravel on both sides. That's your park.
Yeah, not really.
It's like a sidewalk.
It's a sidewalk.
In a neighborhood.
No, you're right, and then and that's why I asked, if it was gonna, you know, kinda weave in and out and have trees and kinda look park-like.
Park-like, yeah, I don't know that it looks park-like, maybe it's a get closer to the river, I guess, maybe, but.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I see your point.
Alright, well.
I mean, th- this is very important discussion, because our next step is to put into an agreement to present to you, uh, you know, the verbiage that will guide these dedications, and it's, to some degree, the surface development of, of park and open space areas. Uh, you know, the, the pocket parks that will be done as part of, uh, individual lots, that is, uh, will be considered by the board at the site plan review stage. As Mark mentioned, one of his recommendations is, in the PUD guide, is that the, this body will look at and approve all the, uh, site plan reviews for this development. Uh, but a- a- again, the, the nuts and bolts about the dedications themselves will be anchored in the ARADA, so you reaching a level of comfort as to what's happening and, you know, the developer giving some indication as to what is or from their standpoint isn't feasible, uh, is really needed for us to get to the next level.
Got it.
So I'm, I am totally happy to increase the width, right? Like, we want this to be pretty, we want this to be nice, and you s-, you know, you spend any time on that property, all you hear is I seventy, so we are keenly interested in creating as much physical, you know, sound barrier between what we're trying to do on the property and that freeway. And so, you know, if it, if it helps you guys, for us to, to either widen that easement or, or create a design that provides for, you know, landscaping and a couple of benches along the way and something that's more in your sort of, you know, headspace park-like, right? Because that's, that's our intent, right? We're not trying to, you know, win one over, I guess.
So let me, are you talking about just widening the trail within the fifteen-foot easement?
Widening the easement, right, so you still-
Maybe bring that easement further south?
So, so there's room to landscape?
Yeah.
Beyond the drainage ditch.
If that's, if that's where we need to kind of meet each other here, that's totally, that's totally okay.
As, as part of the preliminary plan, which would be the next step on a subdivision standpoint, so once you get the zoning in place, they're gonna subdivide this into these parcels that are depicted. And as part of the preliminary plan, they're going to have to submit a landscape plan to you.
I don't wanna trail with gravel on both sides.
We don't either.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't either.
That's not gonna, that's not gonna do us what we want it to do for us.
But it is the width that's needed for a regional trail, yeah.
So I wonder, sorry.
It's okay, I just, we, the regional trail, I, I understand the, the dreams that this connects to a Lova Trail. I've been in many meetings with them, and they are, have expressed almost a hundred percent that they do not wanna be on the south side of I seventy. So I don't think this trail will ever go anywhere, except for the end of the BLM portion.
Good information.
Well, I don't think that the Lova Trail then will ever reach Silt, because they're not gonna go around Davis Point ever.
That's their preferred method.
Well, I'm just saying, though, that, that, they're not gonna do that. We, we've, we've seen the numbers on that, Lova's, Lova's not gonna do that. So it's not gonna get here regardless.
Regardless, yeah, so I mean-
So if it gets, say, Lova builds it as far as the high school, and this goes up and goes across, then does tie to it, and that's but that's a whole nother-
Yeah, we can't get someone to walk to Sixteenth Street and go underneath the bridge rather than going over the overpass. So you're not gonna get someone to go four miles down the road across a bridge.
Well, that's why, I mean, even if we had the trail to the high school, how many people do you think are actually gonna use it?
That's a different discussion.
It sounds like the same discussion.
I mean, the, the discussion on that is one kid gets killed going to Colridge, and that trail's worth it.
No, I understand, and I'm not saying, but, and that's, but the kid has to go out of their way. I mean, it's, there's-
Also looks like Dennis had his handle.
Yeah, so, yeah, if Dennis wants to jump in here real quick, since he's got his hand up, if we can unmute him.
So this is, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, you know, it's a very, uh, poignant and worthwhile discussion that you are having. I would, you know, the trail along the south side of the Frontage Road, along the northern, northerly side of our project, that goes from Road three eleven to the BLM, can be, it, it can serve as a regional trail connection, but what it serves with our project is what we can provide within the boundaries of the property that we own. So we're talking about an eight-foot-wide combination pedestrian bicycle path along that edge within a fifteen-foot wide easement. The, all of the lots, the tracks, one, two, three, and four, will have a landscape setback on the south side of that trail. So there'll be landscaping on the south side of the trail. There will not be landscaping between the River Frontage Road and the trail itself, except for a natural vegetation edge. So I think it's going to be aesthetically more, uh, pleasing than what's being communicated or what's being feared in this conversation. You know, I think our obligation here is just to, to provide an easement and a trail that we will build, that serves the community, and it can connect east and west if other parties, including the town or Loma, decide that that's worthwhile. The other thing I would say is, when you look at the town code and what we're providing, we're, you know, I think we're providing a lot. You know, you're getting the entire river, we're getting connections to the river for fishing and boating and, and access. To, you know, to do a soccer field complex is a multi-acre challenge, you know, we're talking about, if you're gonna do a ball field with soccer and baseball and that kinda thing, you're talking about a minimum of four, four or five acres. That is not what the town code requires with regard to this property. It doesn't work to the town's benefit or our benefit with regard to this property. If there were a place for such, for a community park, it would really best be in the western portion of Track Four. Uh, otherwise, it would be completely disruptive of the plan that Cole and Mitchell are, and, and our team are, are putting together here. So I hope that's useful information. I, as Mitchell was saying, it's our desire to provide an aesthetically pleasing community. The, the, the comments I just made about landscaping on the south side of this trail along Frontage Road are built into the documents that we're providing to you. Happy to answer any questions, I, you know, it's, I understand very much what you're saying, and I think there are things we can do, and there are limitations to what we can do.
Thought that was a good point.
And, yeah, can I just add one more comment? The, the fifteen-foot easement, on my part, when we were talking about how wide that should be, was trying to not monopolize all of the parkland requirement with this trail by putting it in something much bigger. So I understand your points, but that, that's why I was trying to keep it to, this is the size of the trail, this is the size of the drainage, this is what we need. If we expand it, you know, I was trying not to monopolize the two-point-nine acres all in trail for the same reasons that you discussed, so. That's why I was trying to keep it kind of on the, landscape-wise, site plan, um, will be required to do streetscape. So that's part of the review process that's required at site plan review.
So you, you, you have a proposal about how parkland dedication will be, could be handled. You've heard a request to give some credit for dedication of the, the trail area. Uh, and you've heard a request to allow the developer- Uh, and you've heard a request to allow the developer to. Uh, pay up to fifty percent of the parkland is uh in dedication fees. Your parkland dedication fee is fifty seven thousand seven seventy five per acre. Uh, and so, you know, the. If you wanted to suggest a different set of combinations that you felt. Mobilized parkland resources in a better way for the town. Uh, again, we can have a little discussion here, but but at the end of the day, what we're looking for is something that we. Believe that when we bring it back to you, it has a good chance of passing.
Alright, that's fair.
Well, I guess on that note. I'm just gonna throw it out there, I don't think the, I don't believe that the trail system is parkland, that sidewalks within a development. Total parkland they need is two point nine one acres, eighty percent of that is two point three two, so. I'm good with the giving them. The point six for the river that they've mentioned, but I wanna see what. Two point three two acres of true parkland is.
You mean in terms of like physical space?
Physical space, yeah, not trails.
Right.
So you would say, you would uh say get rid of the trail and come up with two point three acres elsewhere, is that what you're recommending?
No, I believe the trail is just part of the subdivision. So the trails need to go in because that's. What I deem as a requirement, just like putting a sidewalk in a residential neighborhood. And on top of, and on top of the trails. Two point three two acres of actual parkland.
So you'd be looking at like Track Seven.
Trail on the north side be extra, cause it's not really going through all the uh properties. Opposed to being mandatory with like C dot and all the all the requirements.
What was that again, Sam? I missed the first part of that.
Uh, wouldn't the trail on the north side of the lots not be a requirement? Cause it's really not accessing any homes or anything opposed to trails inside the residential areas to get to places.
Well, I think we can just make it a part of the agreement that that needs to be constructed.
I think that the trail on the north side needs to be there to make the two access points.
I agree, yeah.
That they are giving to the river. Without that trail, then those access points are are not gonna do us any good.
So those are just trail to access points and then they need to come up with a two point nine acreage uh park of sorts.
Yeah, two point three acres, cause I would, the point six for the. River dedication, is how I see it, I this, I'm just opening up a discussion here to see how everyone else.
Yeah, that was, I was just curious on if that north trail was a mandatory or not, or if it was in, it was gonna be extra for everybody.
And and Mark and Doug can maybe comment about this in terms of using the town's metrics for. The types of development that are gonna go in, how much parkland would be anticipated for the residential areas that are going to be zoned. But some portion of the two point three will actually get dedicated through the site plan review process and, you know. Monkey bars and blade things put on it, so there there will be active parkland within this property. It's kind of a question of what do you do with the remaining and I don't know what the number is, one point seven, one point six acres or whatever that. That that number pencils out to be. And we have a parkland dedication metric already in place that that could be the basis for how to handle.
And then let me ask you this question, so. I don't, i- it's a matter of, you know, um. Semantics, I think, really, though, so like, we have the idea that this trail system isn't really a park. They present it as park. Who really makes that determination as to whether or not it's a park? Okay, good. I don't think it's a park either, so. We gotta figure that out, yeah.
I do wanna clarify that part of it being a park and part of it being parkland dedication is that. There's a public easement that's associated with that trail, so, and a public easement that's associated with the access to the river. So those things are dedicated to the public, they're dedicated to the town.
Yeah.
So that's part of the dedication process.
Sure, yeah, just the land itself, right, yeah.
I mean, we could build them, but if they're not dedicated as part of a process to the town. Then there's, that they're not public access, so that's part of the process of parkland dedication is dedicating it to you.
I understand that.
And and to give you a recent example to that end, so within the Village of Painted Pastures. There is along the ditch. Uh, that that is open space area and it counted towards their parkland dedication and they have improved a. Trail or they will be approving, improving a trail through there and that was. One of the recreational amenities that was dedicated and that they received credit for.
Gotcha, yeah.
My thought, yeah, I mean. Granted, you guys don't have, you know, room for all of this, but you know, if you if you look at that trail. At Iron Bridge along the county road, I mean, to me, sure, it's not a park with a playground or anything. But the way the trail weaves in and it has all the hills and the landscaping and everything, to me, that's that's park to me. But granted, these people don't have that kind of space to do something like that.
Yeah.
And is the one point four acres of trail based on the fifteen foot easement or the eight foot trail?
It's based on the fifteen foot easement, cause that's just what it takes to put it to put the trail in, yeah.
Just the land dedication part?
Yeah.
Well. I suppose I can go either way here.
Sam, which way are you leaning since we can't see your expression on your face?
Okay, yeah, I'm actually, uh, I'm leaning the uniqueness of this project. Um, and you know, I I don't have children, but we uh we're eh, we're outdoors. Outdoor people and we do, we do trails, we do fishing, we do fly fishing, we do rafting. And you know, there's a need for youth sports, however, like I said before, there's a need for adult sports, you know, there's. Things that, you know, I'd love to walk around on a trail by a river and or on a pass, you know, and go check things out. But um, all that combined is seems to be legit to me and it seems like with the code and just. Kind of substituting um acres here and there for to meet what we're requiring. Seems like the numbers are showing that it could happen without, you know, a soc- soccer field, I mean, a soccer field. That that probably should be uh something we need to acquire land and do with the town and build a, build a. Build a parking lot, build some soccer fields, I mean, it's a need, I don't see why we're not saving mudging bud- budgeting for. Giant piece of lot for us to do it, but that's just where I stand.
Yeah, alright.
Trusty Bruton?
Like I said, I think the, they're not asking for the whole park dedication to be trails. I mean, cause they could weave trails all through here and try to, if that's what they're trying to do is have the parks be trails. They could be like, oh, well, let's just weave trails all through the property and we got a fifteen foot linear trail that runs through the whole thing, different areas. Um, there are important accesses, it could be, I mean, you could have kids, you get people taking bicycle up and. Jump or walk, walk up and jump in the river at the one end of the trail. Walk tube down the river and then get on the other end and walk back up and then walk back up into town. Um, I think, I even though I know that Lova's. Um, preferred destination or or area is on the one side of the, obviously. Their preferred destinations don't always work, cause that's why there's a trail by South Canyon, and South Canyon, the tower many feet, that it's probably never gonna go anywhere. It's gonna sit there because it's just not feasible. This might be a feasible trail to the high school, which then gives that opportunity for, gives people a safer option. Cause we can't choose how people are gonna go, but we could provide safe options. Um, and then also the trail access, eh eh, as Sam's saying, eh, not everything's gonna be for the kids to, for parks. There's gotta be some linear stuff, uh, maybe they, and this is just. An idea when we were going around the parks and rec- walked around some of the areas, is put some exercise stations. I think a neat thing along there would be to have some mileage markers or some kind of a, how far distance is stamped into the co- the path of some kind. So people have a way of tracking how far they're going to make it a little bit more of an active usage versus it just being a sidewalk.
Okay, yeah.
But I do think that they should get some credit for parkland for that space because it is quite a bit of space and yeah. We could, we can make them, we could, we could tell them they have to do whatever they want, but eventually, they may say, well, then I guess we're not gonna do it. And I'm not saying that that's where they're gonna go, but that's a feasible, it's realistic.
Rusty Seifer?
I I kinda like the trail system, I'm just thinking out loud if there's a possibility of like up Seventh Street. Like you were saying, you have some stations, you know, where the playground equipment, I don't know, I mean, I'm just thinking if we, there was a spot where we could. Do like up there, do some exercise or spots or some, some kind of equipment. It's kind of my thought. Cause I mean, I'm I'm like, I'm, yeah, I don't, our kids are long gone, so I, I enjoy a lot of hu- hiking and biking, so that's, to me, I would use the trail. But I'm still thinking of the kids too, and I thought, well, if we had those. If we had some spots where there could be some equipment like up there, you know, of, I don't know what, but I'm just thinking, there were some spots we could make a wider spot. Put some playground equi- or I don't know, something in there.
Okay, good. The other option is to accept all this, but not accept the point six acres for the river.
Right.
And then just, so that would be a remaining one point five.
Yeah.
Acres.
But just technically according to your code, the point six can be passive.
Yeah, you're right.
So, I mean.
Alright. Okay.
Everybody's got a different opinion, so I mean.
I think we're leaning towards the trail meets the, the parkland dedication. I know, it was mentioned that Planner Chain went and looked underneath the bridge today, I think that's part of the trail discussion.
No, I did not look under the bridge today, but I've been there, so.
But before we get to that, cause that that is important, I I wanna summarize. Cause again, I wanna make sure we're bringing back to you.
Sure.
You know, what's consistent with your kind of collective direction, so. It it would be that the the applicant. Would get credit for the point six acres of passive.
Yeah, which is the.
Parkland for the dedication of the river. And that they would get credit for one point four acres of of trails that are being developed. And that they would then have an obligation to develop point nine acres of park. Or in the alternative, pay the cash and loo fee uh for up to fifty percent of that.
Right. And then just, just a quick question from like a clerical side on the staff, but you know, who, whose responsibility is it to just verify that that acreage number is correct? With the size of that land dedication, does our town engineer just do that and say, hey, yep, like these trails actually do equal. One point four acres in total?
Yep, be- I think between Mark and Derek, you would, yeah.
Yeah, you just to checks and balances sort of thing on that, right, okay. Chain.
Okay. So the, so we've gone through the concept of parkland dedication, then there were questions about. Improvements that would be made and the big improvement that we talked about at the last meeting was. The trail underneath uh County Road three eleven.
Yeah.
Uh, I was out there many, many years ago and remember thinking to myself, wow, I don't know how we do this. But Mark has been out there far more recently and I think he has some thoughts. Uh, and I think the applicants have some additional observations and we can kind of talk through. Uh, what options the board has at that point.
I don't think getting under that bridge is feasible with the height of that bridge. I think you'd have to reconstruct the bridge and that would have to be at a different elevation. I think you're better off bringing that trail down along the west side of Track Four. And then going across three eleven road. Wherever that access point is directly opposite to the Holiday Inn. Um, driveway right now. Uh, it'd be very difficult to do, it's not a pleasant place, it's gonna be washed out. Or have a lot of water on it on a regular or below regular water year and if it's a. A big year, uh, it could rip out concrete or other things, so I don't think that's a good idea. And it's, eh, to me, to make it work, you'd have to can a lever it and have, it'd be looking, it'd be look like a. For about fifty feet, a mini um cemetery lane up in Aspen, that's that's the only way I see it. So, um. You know, when the, have a trail that goes down there, when that bridge is redone, probably by the county and I don't know. Twenty to thirty five years.
So the, what's.
And see what's going, then then, you know, the town deals with it at that time.
So to.
Now they have more money, they may still be here or their successors and it may, it may, it may make sense.
Yeah, so if we go, if we did go that route, you know, and we go and cross three eleven at that point. You know, do we need to talk to the county at any po- I mean, obviously, you're gonna need some sort of uh traffic control there, flashing lights, crosswalk. Maybe even lit up at night, you know what I mean, it's dark over there, um, just from a safety standpoint, so if we agree to this, can we?
You need a crosswalk, but I look at the main uh way across. The trail and three eleven road is at the uh Frontage Road intersection.
Yeah.
That just makes more sense, this would be for people who are down there and a quick way to get by. I don't know if it would have, you would have raised pavement there, uh, if it would just be a painted crosswalk. Those light signals actually work better than you think, but I don't know if that's a.
You talking about the flashing ones?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, those were great.
I'm not sure that's a good spot so close to the uh Frontage Road, three eleven.
Yeah.
Intersection, I I I look at there being pedestrian traffic there, but um.
Good, um, just, but I'm looking, I'm looking on here, but uh, from from three eleven and and uh River Frontage Road. How many feet down would that crosswalk be, do you think, from where it would cross?
Where it is now, isn't it, it's, it would stay, but that's not lit up or nothing in either, I mean, so that's more dangerous than what's.
The one they're talking about is that entrance into Holiday Inn on the three eleven.
On that one, okay.
They're talking a crosswalk there closer to the river, but I, if we already have one up at the Frontage Road and three eleven.
Right.
I don't think safety wise, you'd wanna put another one in and for the record, the town owns to the edge of the bridge.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, right.
So one is a piece of background, in the original annexation. Uh, your former planner Janet was very. Uh, desirous that there be a connection between the east and the west side of County Road three eleven. Facilitate recreational and and pedestrian traffic. And so the original agreement did have language, as impractical as the implementation probably was, that. That, you know, talked about there being a a connection at that point. This is part of an a- a revision of an annexation discussion, so there is the ability for the board to. Require an offsite improvement. And so one option that uh you might consider if. Providing connection to the trail behind the hotel, which hopefully would then connect with. The uh, a trail that would be developed on the.
Fifteen acre property.
That fifteen acres further to the west would be to obtain a contribution as part of the annexation toward. Uh, a crossing, an at grade crossing facility and then the development of some kind of connector that would then go down to the. Uh, existing trail behind the hotel.
Yeah.
And you're talking about an at grade crossing at what point?
Uh, at the safest point on County Road three eleven.
Oh, okay, just wherever that is.
Well, the safest part from what I can think of, when I drive to the dog park and stuff, would be at that intersection of County three eleven and. The River Frontage Road, which is, I think, what Director Foner's been shaking his head at as well.
Yeah, that would be the safest spot to cross.
Traffic's gonna stop for there and stuff, yeah.
I mean, my thought was, it's a dangerous intersection, so going under the bridge is the safest, cause it gets the pedestrians away from the traffic and.
And you know, if we can get creative with it, yeah, I mean, ye- yes, I mean, go across at the intersection, yeah, that's, that's the easiest. Route there is, you know, but if we get a little creative.
And during, and if, like they're saying during high water, it's gonna wash out and eventually it's gonna be given to the town. First time it washes out, we're gonna be responsible to fix it.
Yes, whether or not it's feasible or not, I, I was just, yeah. Sometimes it seems like we tend to take the path of least resistance, so sometimes maybe we need to get a little creative.
And something to think about the offsite improvements, if you do decide to use the Three Eleven Road crossing right there at the Frontage Road. There's already the path that's in front of the, that empty lot to connect to that and possibly getting a street light there. Cause I don't believe there's a street light there, so if they're gonna put that path in, you're gonna use that at-grade crossing there. Maybe require a street light in that area to help light that intersection at night.
Well, I'd go for a street light and then also some kind of a lighted crosswalk. If you're gonna do that, it flashes whenever somebody's crossing. Because that's really gonna get attention from any direction as people are coming into that.
Yeah, yeah, or, or if there's some way to just make it safer.
Well, that's, that's, I mean, really, a lighted crosswalk would be the best, I think it'd be the way to make it the safest.
I just don't wanna see a crosswalk and call it good.
Well, yeah, no, cause there's already a crosswalk there.
Yeah.
It's making that cross, the existing crosswalk safer.
I bet, I think Mike put it best, you know, it's. Janet really wanted to connect to that path to the south of Holiday Inn. It's an eight foot wide, you know, concrete path. It should be connected, but not under the bridge. I just think that's, it's. It's, it's, it's too difficult, you know, have an offsite improvement if necessary, bring it down and that'll connect to both. That path on the front of Holiday Inn to the north, actually to the other, it's on the other side of that lot and to the south. Having that path along the river can be a good thing in the future.
And there's always the potential for an underpass prior to the bridge, a pedestrian underpass under Three Eleven. Instead of going all the way to the bridge. You underpass before the bridge, and then those two trails can connect. I, that would be an expensive option, and if that's an option that we may wanna go to in the future, would there be a way to do a cost sharing program between? Say, the fifteen acre parcel and this parcel? Or anybody that develops on that side of the.
The, the, the challenge you have for improvements that may or may not occur for years down the road. And, and it's the may not occur. It is that you're going to have portions of the property that get developed quickly. There may be a few parcels that don't get developed for ten years, and the town's hawk to require contribution. Really is through the development process. And so if parcels one, five and six were developed and two, three and four were not. You're gonna end up tagging two, three and four for all the costs of the, you know, the proposed improvement down the road. Which is why we do try to work this, these things out today. You know, I've, I've got a, for a private developer up in the Eagle Valley that I'm, I'm working for right now. A situation involving an underpass uh for pedestrian stuff. Uh and the, the, you know, the town just isn't ready to know exactly where that's going to be. And how it's gonna connect in with other things that are, that will eventually happen down there, and so we simply negotiated. You know, a contribution toward that. Uh and I think really that is because that then allows the landowner to allocate that as they see best amongst the various lots. At the beginning and uh it's just not real practical to say, well, if, if the opportunity comes nine years from now. To, to put this improvement in, we're gonna come back and, cause you don't know who you're gonna be dealing with at that point.
I think even moving that trail across Three Eleven right into the other, other entrance to the Holiday Inn. And then it can connect right to that path, and then somebody just needs to walk fifty feet to the south, and then they're on the path to the river, and then they can continue. Down.
I guess the trail goes all the way across Holiday Inn now, so.
Yeah, so it's, but I mean, we can, connecting it here, you, what, you know what I'm saying? There's a driveway right here.
But even if it doesn't connect under the bridge, I'd still like to see the trail going down to the river, just cause.
Wasn't it going to?
Yeah, I, I just don't wanna see it go away.
Yeah, no, the drill, yeah, it's gotta go there.
I think it, connecting to the Holiday Inn trail at either Three Eleven or just further to the south of Three Eleven where that other turn-in's gonna be is just fine. And eventually we're gonna have really nice little restaurant sitting right there in front of the Holiday Inn, so.
So I'd like to see, I'd like to see both of them marked as crosswalks with signage, because you know people aren't gonna walk all the way back to Three Eleven to cross. They're gonna run across the road at the point where the grade meets the road.
Right, and isn't that kinda where that other turn-in is to the Holiday Inn, that other driveway off?
It's gonna be, I think, oh yeah, cause it's, there's a bank there, yeah, so I think at that intersection.
Yeah, I mean, it's already almost set up as a cross, I, I think that that's just fine, cause you're right.
Even though it's only fifty feet or whatever up to the next one.
No, you're right.
You're gonna have people.
I'm not gonna go, and they're gonna go here, and they're gonna go here, and they're gonna go straight across.
Yeah.
So yeah, we might as well just do it there.
I think they go across where the Holiday Inn.
I think so.
So, part of this would be streetlights at both locations and signage would go into the agreement? Would that be in?
I, I mean, it certainly can. I was just emailing Derek and Trey and Mark to say we should have a. A call to talk about what, you know, safety and, and kind of trail. Connection improvements would be appropriate.
So I mean, it may, it may be worth, um, you know, as part of this noting, you know, just whatever kind of reasonable safety precautions are there to make it safer. So specifically saying what it might be at the time, I guess, but.
We'll let them, we'll let our engineers figure it out.
That's right. All right, I think we got that.
Are we all in agreement on the parkland and the road crossing?
Yeah, I agree.
I, I, I tend to agree that we need to get the engineers and, and Trey on board to make sure. I know that we had a crossing that wasn't at an intersection to get across to the tunnel on, at the Frontage Road. That goes under I seventy, and we were told to move that to the intersection because it was a safer location, so. I'm just trying to qualify that I think the engineers are gonna have some input, and we just wanna make sure we can take that into account.
No, I think you're right, and I think that that's reasonable.
Yep.
I think we just, yeah, I mean, we will, we have an intersection of the Holiday Inn, potentially into this property at that point, so. Yeah, okay.
Right, and we actually agreed to line our intersection up on Track Four with that intersection.
Oh, with the one going into the Holiday Inn, it would, it just makes sense.
And that crosswalk then could be, that could be something for later.
But I just wanna make sure the engineers are on board.
On board.
That's free, it's reasonable, yeah.
It'll be an unofficial crossing.
Unofficial, official, it sounds like.
How it really will function.
If there's not one there, yeah. Well, especially once, but that's gonna be much more when Track Four is developed, which could be, as they're saying, who knows when. So, uh I, I think this has been helpful. We will uh communicate with Derek and, and bring Trey in it. We'll, I'm sure the development team from the applicant will think about that and we'll cross. Pollinate, I don't know, we'll talk about it with each other. And, and we have a little bit of time to figure this out, because the way that the approvals will stack up. Will be that we will do the. Uh the, the first reading of the ordinance for the P U D presumably at the next meeting. We will not approve the amended and restated annexation agreement until the second reading of that ordinance. So that gives us a little bit of time to think through this and, and have that dialogue. Other trail questions from the board? Okay, what I would like to recommend is that we, and, and I think it's not going to take that long. Uh but quickly, we'll work our way through the remainder of uh the chart that we put together. Uh get any remaining feedback from you with the goal that per your agenda, we will be done at nine o'clock. So, or eight fifty-five, we may be a few minutes late. So if you go to page two of that chart, uh and, and I'm just gonna paraphrase a few things. Two point one A, the original agreement called for uh fees, that is like. Development fees to be payable at the time uh that each lot was developed. We've simply added the words lot, phase or tract uh to that definition, so there's no substantive change there. There's no, uh, there's no disagreement with uh the applicant. Uh non-potable water irrigation, as we talked about with you at the last meeting. We, the, the town is willing uh to decree an additional well for this property. Uh which would uh serve the eastern end of the property with raw water uh for irrigation purposes. If that's how the developer would like to proceed. Another option we talked about with the applicant was. Uh to move the location of silt well number two to a more central location, and then they can build pipes out from there. Uh we'll continue that discussion about which is best. Frankly, it's, it's something that could be, we could write it up. As option A and option B, and then implement it at the time of a site plan development, cause really what you want is to know that. Raw water irrigation uh successfully happens once you have development down there. Cause we don't want our wa- our treated water irrigating that area, cause we already have enough. They're, they're, they're aware that, that we are trying to, to very limit how much treated water is used for irrigation. And, and Trey, i- if you could write on, on your lengthy to-do list. We need to figure out how the landscaping of the B L M is irrigated right now. Because that'll be a little bit of part of this discussion.
I got one question on that section. Early on in this process, Dennis Cruetham told us that Track One may develop before anything else. So that he would be using potable water to irrigate? That section?
I think he said.
Cause the raw water wouldn't be developed at that point, so.
That, that was where the idea of a second well came up.
Okay.
That led to the either moving the well or doing a second well closer to that location, yeah.
So I, I, I think conceptually we're on the same page with uh the applicant here. Again, we've got a little bit of. Internal discussion to, to have, but I, I think that it, again, it, it simply would be a variation of what's already been approved for this property. Two point one F, other fees, uh that the agreement will strike the word annexation from the current language. The reason is there were no annexation fees paid at the time of this annexation, so it's just cleaning up the, the language. Uh two point two A, parkland dedication of river access, I think we've talked about that. And we have an understanding of what the board wants to see there. Going clear over to page eight, because the parkland dedication lasted for a few pages. Is water rights dedication, uh again, uh the. At the ti- as I mentioned, the three shares in the Lower Cactus Valley ditch were. Already deeded to the town or assigned to the town at the time of the annexation. In exchange, the landowner is gonna get the right to do up to four point six acres of raw water irrigation through the wells. That'll be developed on the property, so that, we're just cleaning that language up a little bit, but there's no substantive change.
Just, just a really quick basic question, um with, with the three shares out of the Cactus Valley ditch towards what the development. Uh idea looks like here, that's more than enough water to provide for this development. We've had discussions in the past that developers have come in. With not enough water.
That's a good question for the applicant in terms of the landscaping that you see wanting to happen here. We should be all right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can confirm that.
You can confirm that?
We will.
Yes.
I mean, that's, yeah, we should, I mean, it should be written in there that if they have three shares, they can use X amount of water.
And, and, and the, the agreement has actually, and it's based upon a report that was done back in two thousand and seven by the town's water engineer. That, that it was allocated a certain amount of, the value of that, those three shares was dedicated towards. Taps for uh residences, businesses, and then the other portion of that value was de- uh was. Dedicated towards this four point six acres of, of irrigation, so there, there actually was a study that was done that looked at how that balanced out. So that the town's not going in the hole from a water rights standpoint.
Okay, um, looks like Dennis has a hand up real quick. Go ahead, Dennis.
Yeah, there are actually four shares of the, of the Grand River ditch, not three. So the, there are four shares dedicated, there were three shares subject to leaseback for irrigation. And once that irrigation is concluded, all four shares go to the town. There was a, a very comprehensive report prepared by Zinkinella and Associates, I think in two thousand and eight. That quantified the water rights of the four shares of the Grand River ditch to equate to two hundred and thirteen. Single family equivalent taps plus the uh, the um. The water contract that the town has in Rudi provides the augmentation for the. Four point six acres of raw water irrigation for landscape.
Good, good clarification, thank you.
And all of that quantification was based on, on a more intense plan than what you're looking at with the Rizlandi application.
Okay, that's a good, that's a good point, because I wasn't here for the prior, and I guess I haven't really studied it, so this density is not.
It's much lower.
Yeah, it's a lot lower, okay.
Could potentially be, yeah.
Okay.
So k- keeping on water rights dedication, so bottom of page eight, top of page nine, um as, as Dennis mentioned. The. The wells that will do the raw water irrigation will be augmented under the town's plan for augmentation. We're getting the benefit of the four shares uh of Lower Cactus Valley ditch water, but there is a bit of a time difference. In terms of when municipal water use take, turns on, uh and when the ditch turns off. We're augmenting that under our Rudi contract, so the town has a contract in Rudi reservoir. Uh the developer will pay a, a prorata portion of, of the fees that the town has been paying for that Rudi contract. In the middle column on page nine, you'll see that back in twenty twelve, uh that number was twenty-three, six, thirty. We've updated that for payments that the town has continued to make over the last decade, so that number is now thirty thousand, ten dollars, just so you're aware.
Just to follow up on water rights, like is it pertinent to bring up? Didn't, didn't we have some audit regarding either the, the way that we store water in Rudi and our augmentation plan and or? The credit that we get for water that we return back into the river. If I remember right, it might've just been some clerical thing that we had to do, but I don't know if that would have any impact on what we're looking at here.
I, I will schedule, so it doesn't, that, that deals with our historic user pool.
That's right.
Designation, uh I'm glad you bring that up. I will, in the next two or three meetings, we'll do a little executive session. That, that case has been filed, uh statements of opposition will be completed at the end of the month.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll provide a update to the board.
Thanks.
So. Top of page nine, I, we're in agreement, bottom of page nine, this really is just cleaning up some language. Uh the, the flood study that was identified in the older agreement was completed. And we're just striking some language that that would be done, and instead just noting that it's been done.
It's done.
Yep. Two point two D, uh this is the bottom of page ten, drainage improvements, uh there is a swale. Uh and Sheila, if you could put page thirty-seven back up on the. We keep going to page thirty-seven. So water from. So water from the north side of I seventy and the north side of the railroad gets channeled through a culvert, and it comes out on this property, and, yeah, thank you, Sheila. And the, on, on this exhibit, tract four, it's in the, the northwest corner of the development. That swale crosses tract four. And currently, it does everything it needs to do. It carries that drainage down to the river. The language that it, we're proposing in two point two D simply says that drainage improvements, if any, that need to be constructed, will be considered as part of the site plan review for tract four. And it's something we'll deal with at that time. Two point two F on page ten. Again, this deals with C dot, access permits. The applicant in the middle column has added some language about what their intent or desire is in terms of applying for access permits from C dot for the frontage road. Staff doesn't have a problem with that. Ultimately, it will be C dot that makes those determinations as to how many points of access they get. Page twelve, two point two G one, trails. Talked a lot about that. I think we've got your, your feedback on that. Down to page fifteen, two point two H, existing well and septic. The issue here, similar on that tract four, so that's again the northwest parcel, there used to be a house there. It had a, a well and a sep- an old septic. The language in this agreement simply says that at the time that that property is developed, they need to get rid of the septic and cap the well.
And why not before?
There's not really any reason to. They're just sitting out there, no one's using them.
Okay. Take your word for that.
It's been, I mean, it's been abandoned for-
A decade or more, two decades.
So anything that was gonna leach from the leach field has been leached.
It's leached out?
It's leached out.
Uh, onto page sixteen. New article, site plan review. This is what Mark talked about, that the site plan applications for this development will come before the board for review and approval. Down on page seventeen. Three point one B, existing use of property. Just very minor cleanup language, no objections or comments. Three point two A, zoning and comp plan.
Hold on.
Yes.
So in three point one B, I think the applicants are adding language that they may develop one well pad for oil and gas extraction.
Yeah, alright, so you, you, I'm, I'm glad you brought, I actually am glad you brought this up. So the applicant, and we'll let them talk a little bit about this, but they have been endeavoring to get a release of the surface use, not the surface use agreement, but the, I guess it would be pad site agreement with the developer, with the less see of the minerals.
Yeah, okay.
So that, that no longer encumbers this property.
I understand that, but, man, that, that opens up a can of worms. Like, are we? Tell me what that means. So may develop one well pad for oil and gas extraction. So we're not talking minerals, we're talking oil and gas.
A pad site.
Mike, can I, can I touch it real quick?
Sure. Why don't you come up to the microphone?
Chad Lee Balcom Green, the applicant's team. So, this is my mistake. In the revised ADA that we sent to Mike and Jolie on Thursday, I had deleted this section.
Okay.
So what you're seeing in this table, it's my fault, is no longer in the agreement. So we intend to get rid of that surface use pad site agreement.
Okay.
So we won't have to account for that in our-
Yeah.
Good deal.
Okay.
I can't imagine what would happen if you allowed them to put an oil and gas thing out there.
It, it would be very inconsistent with-
You say it wouldn't really fit in with the whole-
You bet.
Rest of the-
Thank you, Chad.
It's the, it's the theme we're going for with the-
Hey, man, I'm all about making money.
Tourism, tourism in western Colorado.
An industrial-
Okay, alright, that clears up a lot there, yeah, on that one.
Be an event and be exposed to toxic chemicals.
So three point two A, down to the bottom of seventeen, that, so the, the prior, prior zoning was the B two highway business district. This just notes that what we're amending at this point is the PUD that's in place. Through, page eighteen, three point three A, issuance of building permits. This just notes that oh, uh, that, so we're gonna put in place zoning, which technically means they could start developing certain things consistent with the zoning. And what we're saying is, you have to subdivide it. You, you, you know, before you move forward and we issue you building permits, you can't just have this twenty acre big parcel. You've actually gotta go through the subdivision process. And then the final one, three point six C vested rights. Vested rights, what that means is that during the pendency of a vested rights term, the town can't change the rules on you. You can't go and change the zoning. They get a period of time in which to develop the property consistent with the approval. The prior agreement had a five-year vested rights period. This agreement, they've requested ten years. I will tell you, for larger developments like this, ten years is not an unreasonable vested rights period. I agree, so.
And that applies to both commercial and residential development?
Would be across the-
Across the seven tracks, or, yeah.
Correct. So, happy to answer any other questions or get further feedback, but again, as I mentioned when we walked into this discussion, the applicants have been very cooperative to work with. I, I feel like ninety percent of the things we, you know, we were able to quickly reach a, an agreement as to what the language should say. There obviously were a few things that required board direction as to how we proceed, and I feel like we've gotten that today.
Yep. I agree. What else?
I have no questions.
I don't think I've got anything.
No questions here.
Let me, actually, I did have one. I lied, I got one question. Six page five, real quick. So under two point two A, number four. So it's actually technically on page six of this. The wording says park equipment shall be installed by the owner. Shouldn't it say paid for and installed by the owner?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, and then that same section, number seven. Shall dedicate two easements to the town for easements to, hard to facilitate a future trail. Under the way I read that, it just says that they're dedicating land to us, not actually putting the physical trail in.
Yeah, and what they've, if I understand correctly, the proposal is that the footpaths down to the river, both on the east and the west side, will be installed by the applicant.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna count it as parkland, then I would assume they're gonna physically be installed, not just an easement.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well, but smart to have that in writing, yes. And that was the intent, I would assume?
Yeah, and to be clear, it's to the, it's to the publicly owned river parcel.
Parcel.
Um, so that there's access through the privately owned parcel to the publicly owned parcel.
Parcel.
That's where the, that, that's where the endpoint will be.
Okay.
Which we're calling the normal height of the river?
I called it the ordinary watermark.
Watermark, so, so technically, I'm, this is offset it, but technically, at some point, either high water, that end of that trail could be underwater? Depending on how it's graded.
Water changes, so at some point, it might not get all the way to the water, at some point, it might be underwater.
Underwater, okay.
I mean, it just depends if it's high water or low water.
I, I know, I'm okay with that. I just want that understanding that sometimes-
It's kinda like a boat ramp.
It might be ten feet short, and it might be ten feet underwater.
Right, right.
Okay. Um, I think those are the only things I saw in there, so.
Alright.
So to, to kind of, does the applicant have any other comments? So to bring this back to kind of where we started at the beginning, I think there is a formal motion that the board can consider making, and that is to approve the sketch plan of the applicant, and then, you know, I, I guess you could do this by a, a motion vote, but would be to give the staff direction to bring an ordinance to you for the PUD zoning, consistent with the, the conditions that Mark has listed in his staff report. And then we will be continuing the public hearing for the PUD. One more meeting session where we will then hold, I believe, a first reading of that PUD ordinance at that time.
Gotcha. And this is a public hearing too, right?
This one is just a discussion item.
Oh, we're still back in stuff.
We're circling back to the-
I think we did go back.
We gotta combine the two so we can make sure we have the public hearing.
The discussion item is over, so we're going back to
Right.
The previous one.
Yeah.
Got it. So yes, this is a public hearing, so the time is now nine oh five PM, and I will open up the public hearing in regards to the Reslanda planned unit development rezoning and subdivision sketch plan, AKA the Divide Creek Center PUD. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, I did not hear from anyone.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands.
Alright. Okay. How would anybody in the public like to make a? I mean, yep. In regards to this agenda item. Seeing none, the time is now nine oh six PM, and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
I don't think I have any further discussion on the matter.
I don't either.
Discussed out.
So the motion is just going to bring back an ordinance? For PUD zoning?
Approve the sketch plan.
So again, there, there is the sketch plan, that's the subdivision sketch plan that's, that's been presented. You, you would approve that by, by motion and vote. And then direct your staff to bring back an ordinance for the PUD zoning, again, consistent with the-
Consistent with the conditions and your input.
That Mark had, yep, identified in your input. And then a motion to continue the public hearing for the PUD rezoning to the next meeting.
August eighth, yeah, okay.
That's a lot. No?
Alright.
Mayor Eichel does, though.
Hope somebody does, because I didn't read it down.
It must be on the agenda.
Okay.
So I guess I will make a motion to approve the subdivision sketch plan as presented?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by myself, the mayor, to approve the subdivision sketch plan as presented, seconded by trustee Seifert. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that part carries unanimously. And then, I'd like to direct staff to bring back an ordinance for the PUD zoning per plan or change recommendation and the board's input.
And, and if there are additional comments or direction from members of the board, we certainly wanna hear those.
I don't have any.
Think we got those.
I'm good. Sam, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Alright.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to continue the discussion-
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, to continue the public hearing for the Reslanda planned unit development to our next board meeting on August eighth, twenty twenty-two.
So.
Okay.
Alright, we got a motion by Mayor Protem not to continue the public hearing for the PUD for the Reslanda PUD until August eighth, twenty twenty-two, seconded by trustee Britton. Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 Alls opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Alright then.
Okay. Alright, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I think we made some progress tonight.
Thanks. I agree on the progress.
Progress, yeah, thank you. Alright, next up is the second reading of ordinance number twelve, series twenty twenty-two. An ordinance of the Town of Silt, Colorado, referring to the registered electors of the Town of Silt at the November coordinated election to be held on Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-two. A question asking whether sections five dash three, five dash nine, and two dash two of the town charter shall be amended to change the regular municipal election to the state of Colorado coordinated election in November, in odd numbered years. Give the town expressed authority to participate in the coordinated elections and change the election for the mayor and trustees to occur in November in odd number of years. And I will turn this over to our attorney.
Sheila, do you wanna start off? I, I know we gave a staff report on this at the last meeting, but maybe you've got some additional comments?
I really don't have anything new to add to this, but I would certainly answer any questions that anyone might have after thinking about our discussion at the last meeting. This would just allow us to present a ballot question on the November coordinated election to ask the voters to change our regular election cycle from April of even numbered years to November of odd numbered years.
Great. I have no questions.
I don't either.
Nope, makes sense to me.
So, second passage of this ordinance on second reading will allow for the town to, for Sheila to work with the county court to put this on the ballot for the November election. And as noted, it is a, a public hearing.
Okay. Sam, do you have any questions?
No, I, I don't. I'm, I'm on board, so.
Okay. Uh, the time is now nine eleven PM, and I will open up the public hearing in regards to ordinance number twelve, series twenty twenty-two. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, sir.
Okay.
I have no raised hands.
Alright. And we have nobody from the public left with us, so. The time is now nine twelve PM, and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number twelve, series two thousand twenty-two as it's presented?
I'll second.
Alright. A motion by Mayor Protem not to approve ordinance number twelve, series twenty twenty-two as presented, seconded by trustee Clausen. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was that a nay, Sam?
No, that was an aye.
Okay, alright. Alls opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the park projects briefing, and I will turn this over to Administrator Lament.
Mr. Mayor, if we could make one small change to use our attorney's time a little more wisely. Can we move up the backflow and cross connection control program discussion to now, and then Trey can talk a little bit about that, and we can have the benefit of Mike's assistance here if we need it.
Alright, we can do that. So we're gonna move on to the agenda item for the backflow and cross connection control program discussion, and I will turn that over to Director Foner.
Thank you. As part of the Colorado primary drinking water regulations, it requires the water supplier that owns and operate a public system, such as the Town of Silt, to protect the drinking water from contaminants through cross connections. In January of twenty sixteen, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment put out this regulation eleven, which basically states that- put out this Regulation eleven, which basically states that um most commercial properties and some residential properties must have backflows in place. Um the town must account for them and have the yearly test results from the backflow. They will, CDPHE will look for these records when they do sanitary surveys. Um and if we cannot produce the records or we're not in the right percentage of requirements, that will um result in a violation um against the town. Our water wastewater operator, Victor Telles, um when we hired him, this was part of his job requirement, he's been doing a great job with it, trying to get us up to date on this program. Um as you can see, we identified about a a hundred and thirteen properties. Currently, we have forty-three that are not in compliance, we're we've had some that we just haven't heard from, we had a few tell us that they're not gonna do it and there's nothing we can do about it. So the uh the letter that is attached to it is the letter that I put together to send out to these forty-three residents, well, not residents, forty-three property owners. Some are, the majority of them are commercial, to try to get some sort of response. So we have our compliance for this program. And also to let you know this, it's a state primary regulation, so the other towns around us are doing it, we actually Victor spent some time with one of the neighboring towns to go through their program and we kind of mirrored their program with what we're doing. And I'll answer any questions.
So is this for properties that use um treated water for irrigation, as it's kind of coming in the same way or not?
Yes, um we, for us, it's just um Mereloma, Iron Horse, whatever you wanna call it. Them properties up there, we are asking them to provide the proof of backflows and stuff and that's pretty much for the most part, that's the only residential we're doing. Now, like the multi-family residential's, like the apartments going in or the whatever you want, the tiny homes that aren't tiny homes, whatever you wanna call them. They're on master meters, so they have to have a backflow as well, cause they're multi-family.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, that makes sense.
We've gone in the third apartment.
Yeah.
And that's one backflow for basically all the tiny homes, correct? Or does each tiny home have to have its own?
It's one backflow for each meter, so there's gonna be three meters out there, so there'll be three backflows. And they have to be tested yearly. And if you see in the letter, since we're getting this program off the ground, but from here on we're trying to get everybody to get it to us by May first, all the testing every year. Because after that, we have, there's like a build into it, there's like a thirty-day grace period and then we can go with a letter like that like this and a sixty-day grace period, so.
We really gonna shut their water off?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have to?
Yes. To get.
The state says we have to, or is that us saying?
Well, we have to get compliance. And it does state in our code thirteen oh oh six oh three oh that we can shut their water off for non-compliance to backflow and cross connection.
I'm just wondering, it says we'll be forced to, who's forcing us? Us?
Well, if we wanna make them, if they need to comply, then we have to.
I'm just asking who's forcing it.
Yeah, it's basically a state.
So backflow, backflow prevention is actually to protect the system. When that, when that water backflows, it siphons in toilet water, it siphons in sewer water, right into our tanks into our system.
You know.
Make the uh people sick, that's why I just come down the pipe.
No, no, that's, I get it.
Well, it could be argued that the people that are not being compliant are forcing us by not being compliant.
I know what they're for. If this letter is on my door, I'm calling the town and I'm saying
They're calling you.
Forcing, who's forcing you to shut off my water?
You are.
The town is.
No, you are. You as a property owner are forcing me to shut it off by not being compliant.
It's Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment are saying that the town has to be compliant.
Got you.
And for us to be compliant, we need these people to do backflows. And if they're not gonna be compliant
Yep.
the only measure we have is to shut their water off until they become compliant.
And Kyle, this is. Their water shut off, then we're compliant because it's not causing a problem.
This is the last resort.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not against the letter. I wanna know who's forcing us to turn off their water.
It it would be so that we we operate a certified public water system. And part of that certification is that we have to comply with this backflow prevention rule. And if we're not in compliance and we get audited, the state can impose penalties against the town and potentially revoke our certification, so for the benefit of all water users in Silt, we need to have compliance.
And it still gives you sixty days.
Can't we just cross out forced? Or to cross out be forced? Sixty days from the day of this notice, the town will shut off your water.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, that's.
And 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 I would know.
It's semantics, guys, but like what I'm saying is are are we then, okay, you don't comply, so now we know you don't comply, and are we calling CDPHE and saying, hey, this address didn't comply and they're saying shut his water off? No. If we wanna be like that, just say we're gonna turn your water off.
But periodically, the states will come in and kind of say, okay, let me see your files. And if you can't produce those files, then you could be in violation.
Nobody's forcing us to turn the water off, we're choosing to turn the water off.
Yes, we can take be forced out of there. And just say the town will shut off your water.
I just want you guys to know, that's how I think, and I think other people might think that way.
No, I mean, for, I work for City of Glenna's Water Department, this is what I do for my job, so yeah, we do the same stuff.
Okay.
And yes, I mean, you know, if a customer says, hey, I don't have time to get it tested, don't shut my water off. Can you give me a week? You know, we'll we'll work with them and yeah, and say sure, you know, and usually.
If you're the water guy. And I'm there and I get this letter and I call you and I say, who's forcing you to shut off my water? And you start beating around the bush like that, all that's gonna do is make me upset. Just say, we're gonna turn your water off.
Yeah, just.
The Town of Silt's gonna be turning.
Move that section and it's fine.
Yeah, but it does give you sixty days, it gives you two months once you.
We're just saying that remove the we'll be forced to, just say we're gonna shut off your water, it's the same thing.
Just saying, that's what I thought of when I read it, that's all.
We like that word, Smith.
And and when when Trey called me to talk about this, I mean, you know, our discussion really was, you know, the Town of Silt wants to help people.
Comply.
Sure. We're we're not out there to uh find ways to turn people's water off.
Right.
And so, you know, Silt or Trey and his team, they they they, it's not, it doesn't go straight to this letter. There's a lot of, hey, we need your help, we we we, you know, this needs to happen. Here are the people you need to call, there there's a lot of work to help the citizenry.
This is like the third.
Yeah, yeah.
The third attempt.
And we'll move on past that, but maybe, somebody might ask me, but you know, why are these properties built and have water service without having a backflow preventer? Why weren't those installed when the system was put in?
Because it wasn't required then.
No, okay, all right, that's all I needed them.
And then the, just real quick, the food trailers, are they considered part of this?
Yes.
Okay.
They are.
They've gotta have, and I would I would believe that even if multiple properties are served by one meter, each unit has to have a backflow, cause you could potentially backflow from one unit and contaminate everybody upstream of that meter.
You could, but at that point, it's on the property owners, the backflow that goes in from multi-family is protecting the town's system. Once it goes through the meter, it's theirs, so if it feeds seven other houses, it's up to them to figure that out, as long as we have a main backflow on the main feed to all them seven houses, it protects the town's system.
Okay.
But you make a good point, they really should, but that's not a requirement of this.
I would think that is a requirement though of a plumbing inspection.
Not necessarily, I don't know, I don't know the plumbing code well enough to exactly tell you what it calls for.
Yeah, I think it's in there, so I think if we're missing backflow preventers on all these tiny homes or Mereloma, they shouldn't be passing plumbing inspections.
Yeah.
We won't have to look into that.
Know that better than.
Plumbing is different than than, you know, this, you're right.
But this is a very nice program to do it. We work in a municipality, you get a letter, if it's not on in seven days, they shut your water off.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So giving them sixty days.
First Street.
First Street.
Right, the the one right next to Listadia Church, the development up there.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I don't think we have anything for our attorney on that.
Thank you, everybody.
All right.
Have a good, have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you, attorney.
Okay.
Thanks, Senator, appreciate it.
I suspect, yeah.
Okay, so we will go back to
Now we'll go back, yeah.
The park project briefing and I'll turn this over to Administrator Lehman.
And Sheila, I think, has this as a PowerPoint, so uh you can follow along uh with the both PowerPoint and with this uh gritted uh handout we had.
Don't let the mosquitoes in.
It's getting warmer everywhere. It's getting hot.
Yeah.
I was thinking about the same thing there.
Put a chair there.
We could open the front door too, get some. You stand there, if we need you, we'll holler.
He's running this thing.
We're gonna need him for this one, Jared. All right, you'll recall, we've got some money in our twenty-two budget to do some uh improvements in uh in our parks. Uh we also just received two hundred thousand dollars in a grant from Garfield County uh for some other projects that were on our wish list, so we've uh kind of folded all of that into our uh our work plan. Um we're actively working on that now and I think it's important to keep all of you and the community uh kind of up to date in uh where we are, where we're going uh this summer and a couple of projects that will finish up next year. So I'll just kind of jump in to uh the the slideshow and it should, it should correspond, I think. Uh it's supposed to with the um with the sheet you have in your packet. So uh this, first of all, uh maybe this one isn't on that list. But one of the things we talked about in our last uh Parks Recreation Culture uh subcommittee meeting was to uh sort of standardize all of our signs and posts in all of our parks to make sure they all uh were the kind of the same. We decided we really like this particular signpost or or sign uh to mark our parks and also to use as our wayfinding signs. We have money in the twenty twenty-two budget to study why wayfinding. But why study it when we think we really have something that works at this point? So uh that's the first thing. Next slide, please, uh is the gazebo. Uh we had gone over there with uh trustee Seifert a couple of months ago and looked at that and determined that it was structurally sound. And we made a few uh repairs on it, including beefing up those railings a little bit and and then um maybe a couple other boards that we took out and fixed and then we painted it.
Looks good.
It does look good. I'm also, on a side note, we are um asking uh all of our performers for the farmer's market to use it um and to see what their level of comfort is being up there using it.
Skateboarder.
Skateboarder. Oh, is that what it was? And then uh in heyday, we'll ask uh the artists to use it as well. So uh and and we'll report back on, cause it's kind of a active survey, are you gonna, do you wanna use it or not? And uh if not.
Why?
Why do you, why not?
The last farmer's market with the guy up there playing music, that was really cool.
Yep, we've had uh out of three farmer's markets, two of the artists have used it, one preferred to be down closer to the the action. Okay, next slide is the um Isle, uh Silt Island Park Boat Ramp Acci- uh access. You've probably seen something in the paper on that, hopefully you've been over there to look at it. Um Trey worked hard with um uh Paul Stepp at uh
Middle Colorado.
Middle Colorado, Middle Watershed District uh on grants and so forth. And so that's, I think, been a real success. Um next slide is just a quick note on the Silt River Preserve Pond Restoration. Um we've uh we actually started flowing some water into that pond last week after going through some water rights study and so forth and so on and uh I I I actually haven't heard yet whether the pond held water.
As long as we, if we're filling it, it'll hold water, it lost about a foot overnight and then we shut it off Friday night and it was pretty much down to its normal level Monday morning.
Okay.
So it didn't, if it's being filled, it'll hold water, but it doesn't hold without a fill behind it.
So it's kind of a nice test to see what what we've got over there and what we're gonna need to do to 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 make that pond restoration actually work. Okay, getting into playgrounds, we're gonna um that next uh playground is is Eagles View Park and uh I was kind of lazy when I snapped this picture and just took it from the street. Uh so you really can't see the playground, but there it is and you can see some people who actually used it. And then the next uh slide is uh what's proposed to replace it.
Awesome.
And it has a, is that the one? Did I put the wrong one in?
No, that's the right one.
Okay, that's what I thought. So it's got a little bit of a woodland uh sort of feel to it, I think. And uh that's moving forward. I will say that the, in the next slide, uh actually, yeah, we can, hang on, just a second. Um we we probably, due to rising costs, we're probably not likely to be able to do both the playground and the fall protection in twenty twenty-two. So the fall protection, we'll have to wait till next year. And we'll have to go through, we'll have to put some money in twenty-three budget to do that.
That's Eagles View you're talking about?
Yeah, Eagles View, yeah. So this is Mesa View, uh again, this one, we're gonna do fall protection in two thousand twenty-two. Uh we're gonna be efficient with this, uh our guys are gonna go out there and watch the pros. Put this uh fall protection in and they're gonna teach us how to do it and then we'll be able to do the other parks and save, probably save about forty to forty-five percent, I think, on the cost of.
Are they doing the prep work underneath too?
No, we will do the prep.
They'll just actually come in and lay the product or whatever, cool.
Yep. Uh so then uh the next one is Flying Eagle Park. Um this, this is maybe the most ambitious one and it's one that wasn't actually uh in the budget uh this year, but we are using a lot of that Garfield County money. And I think one of the things that's really exciting about this and you've probably seen it is the addition of the rec path there. Um we think that makes this park uh usable by uh you know, parents and and younger kids who can circumvent the park, do laps around the park while their other little kids are playing soccer out there. So it'll be a kind of a multi-use uh addition to uh that park.
It's gonna be awesome.
Yeah.
What was the stopping point lately?
Yeah.
I see it stopped for like a week or so and then.
Um because we uh had other projects we had to get to and we ran out of manpower.
Gotcha, I wasn't sure if there was a problem.
No, no, it was just plant planting and manpower. Huh?
Where you taking all that dirt?
Right now, we're taking all that dirt and putting it next to the water plant where that um sunken area is, so we can level, get it compacted and level out, so when we whenever a new plant gets built, we've got the subgrade in there.
Cool, good stuff.
So to speak.
I was just gonna ask, is it right behind the curb and gutter?
Yes, we're gonna put it right behind the curb.
And then just go like right around the fire hydrant or just like.
Yeah, we're going around the mailboxes and the fire hydrant.
Love it, it'd be so nice.
And then the southeast corner, instead of going to the corner, it's gonna cut across.
To miss all that electrical stuff.
Oh, you'll go in front of it, you mean, the electrical box?
Electrical box will be between the path and the street.
Yeah, okay, right, oh, that makes sense.
Yep.
Yeah, cool.
And then again, uh fall protection, we had hoped to do uh on that playground, we'll do again uh next year.
The good news is next year will be cheaper because we'll be able to do most of the work.
Correct, uh yeah, absolutely.
That's the plan.
Yeah, we'll prep it, and we'll install it, so that, that should, should save some money. Assuming it doesn't go up in cost again. Okay, Stony Ridge Ball Field, uh, improvements, we're, uh, looking at modifying, uh, uh, base paths and pitcher's mound from, uh, or adding fifty, seventy, and sixty, ninety. Uh, I think one thing we wanna spend a little time on is, um, m- making sure that we don't, well, understanding how much, how much, uh, this, of the U-12 soccer field that we put there every year, uh, how much of that new infield goes into that field, and whether or not that's, uh, that interaction is gonna work on one or both of those, those fields. At least, we just wanna at least do the research on it, and, and we'll bring that back to the Subcommittee as we do. And we're also gonna look at just, uh, field usage, you know, uh, numbers and so forth. So, we'll bring that back to you and the committee. Uh, let's see, s- uh, s- Community Park Playground Replacement, that, um, eh, that, eh, that old swing set re- probably reminds Jerry and I of our elementary school days. That one's been around for a while, I can tell. Uh, and then, uh, on, um, and then the replacement for that will look a little bit like this.
Oh dang.
That's a replacement of the play area stuff.
Correct.
And the swing would be replaced by one that's similar to at the other parks, that's more the big tubes that go up and around and across.
Yep. And again, we'll have to see how all that kind of fits together within our, um, budget for this year. Some of that might go to next year. Certainly, the fall protection will go to next year. We did have some long conversations about the rest of that park. We talked about, um, uh, the tennis courts, we looked at those. You know, they look pretty good for as old as they are, they're faded, um, but that material that they put on there seems to work just fine. I know purist, purist tennis enthusiasts would not like it, but, um, I think for, you know, a community park, for people to go out there and just recreate on it, I think it works fine. Um, we think the fact that the door, the gate is locked, and people have to call Town Hall to get the combo to get in there, probably, probably saves some, some issues with it, although I'm not a, I'm not a huge fan. But, uh, you know, there is, has, there was in the past vandalism there, and that's, I think, been, has been tailed off some.
How much notice does somebody need before they can go play?
Well, as long as we're open, that, well, and we just give them the code, it's not like
Oh, I gotcha, okay.
It's not like
They don't send somebody over there.
Oh, okay.
We don't do any of that, yeah, I mean, it's, it's an honor system to lock it back up when you're done. We, when we went over there the other day, it was unlocked, so, uh, you know, it, it, but eh, I think just the, uh, that additional security probably helps.
You bet.
Some. Uh, I, I think pickleball is huge, I think we're gonna see, uh, people start wanting pickleball, so we should at least have that in the back of our mind, uh, to maybe convert one of those courts at some point, and then you're, or, I, I wouldn't do it until we have requests for it, but it's definitely coming this way. It's big, and the retirement set loves it, so, um, so that's a big deal. And then also, um, the basketball courts, we're looking at an overlay there in the next year or two, probably, a couple, couple of years. Uh, we'll need to do that, and fix some of those goals a little bit. Okay, the Zurich Demonstration, uh, Garden, uh, it's clear that I'm not a photographer. Anybody with half a brain wouldn't put a telephone pole or a light pole or whatever that is in the middle of their picture. But, uh, we, it's, we are gonna take that, uh, planting bed right next to Town Hall and put some, uh, Xeriscate there, uh, as part of a campaign to educate our folks, to let them know that these are plants, these are native plants that use a lot less water, and, uh, you know, y- we'd encourage people to, uh, to, you know, to, uh, replace turf grass with these kinds of plants, if they're, if they're of a mind to do it. These would be, this would be a good way to do it. Uh, so next, uh, Recreation Path Replacement, we've got, uh, oh, there's a, there's a demonstration garden in somewhere else, USA. Okay, next is the rec path in front of, uh, the Stony Ridge Pavilion. Um, that path going up, uh, into, into Eagles View is in pretty bad shape. We're not quite sure how much we'll be able to do, uh, given the price of asphalt these days, but we'll do as much as we can, and then we'll also do, uh, a, a long Seventh Street, um, uh, north of, uh, north of the town shops, where we have our park course along there. Um, there's a lot of roots and stuff there that have infiltrated that one. And then, uh, and then we've got some sidewalks, uh, in, up in, uh, in, well, down in Old Town, and then a few in Stony Ridge that, uh, need to be rehabbed, and we've got about fifty thousand dollars to do as much of that as we can this year. And I think, Trey, I think you said you'd already done a couple of those up in, um, Stony Ridge, right?
Did some in Stony Ridge and some over in Flying Eagle.
And then last but not least, uh, the concept of, uh, exploring the, uh, idea of a rec center with Newcastle is not dead, it's just dormant. There's a lot of other stuff going on, and, uh, we've just, we have been talking, t- we've been, I've been talking to the manager in, uh, in Newcastle, but we haven't really put anything together yet to kind of bring that back, uh, to you all, just to chat about it. What questions or thoughts do you have? Oh, I did put also, uh, some budgeted numbers on there, too, in case anybody has any questions about that, and a long list of some of the things that, uh, we came up with as, as part of our meeting last week.
Um, do you have a comment on your photo, or no?
Oh, how come that didn't get on the, maybe it did?
Wonder what?
It didn't. Uh, that's the other half of Silt Island Park. You'll remember, we have, uh, talked about, uh, acquiring the western part of that island, uh, for open space and parkland in Silt, um, and I know that's, it's sort of, again, uh, speaking of dormant, it's, um, something we're sort of waiting on AVLT to come up with a plan on. Um, I heard from them, oh, maybe a month or six weeks ago, they were looking into the ownership of that again, and, uh, but I haven't heard anything back, uh, since then. Thank you for bringing that up.
I was just curious, I saw it there, so
Yeah, there it is.
Um, I have a thought, you know, based on, you know, Trustee Sam Walls, he talked about a splash park somewhere in town, and I, I think that's a good idea, you know, somewhere down the road, you know, and just for, for the kids.
Like somewhere in the near future, I think, is a great idea for a splash pad.
Yeah, I think that would have been potentially a perfect project to work into the Rosalinda Development. Uh, so, that was the wanting actual parkland and not trails.
Well, and that could be part of the park where the, uh, that's gonna go in that residential area.
Potentially, but I, I think at this point, we're getting a small tot lot and riverbed and trails, so. I think that's what we have to look forward to, when we, when we budget stuff and we want stuff, we have to keep it on our radar when developments are coming in, because we're not gonna fund a five hundred thousand dollar splash pad.
True, I will say, just on that point, I do think a better location for a splash pad's on the north side of I-70 in town, and not down there, but you're right.
Correct, but, but that's, I mean, payment in lieu.
Yeah.
My thought was always where the community center was.
Center was.
Well, see, and that's, and I actually, when we were walking around, we talked about that somewhat. Um, one of the things, Trey was resonant about a splash pad due to maintenance upkeep and general pain in the rear. Um,
That's okay.
What, and, uh, but one of the things that, and I've talked to, I've had a lot of people request, every year when we do the Heydays Horseshoe Tournament, people talk about if we had more pits, they would do, there's leagues that actually travel around, Gypsum has them all the time, and most of them end up in Gypsum because of the pits that they have over there. Um, the area over there, I kind of walked it and talked to some people, we could put five to six horseshoe pits across there in that area where the, well, community center building used to be. It'd be minute, not a whole lot of work. Um, I also, some of the individuals, I was just, is, is a quick talk, he, like, one of the guys works at a gravel pit and s- uh, concrete up in Carbondale. So, he talked to his boss, his boss is like, yeah, if I got some kind of a sign giving me credit for donating materials, I'd do it. And that's mostly because, no, some of that's gonna be because of it being an employee of theirs asking for it versus the, if the town were to go to ask them for it, they'd probably be like, yeah, no, we're not gonna do that. But because an employee of theirs who's worked there for a long time is like, hey, could we, is this something we could do? They're interested, and I think that we could get a lot of community, um, involvement, eh, as far as on labor, and some of the stuff of getting, just some of the work done, and it wouldn't be just somebody to throw it together, it's guys that do this stuff for a living better, and then would, um, it'd be a good use of some of the area over there, it could bring some extra people to town, make the Heydays Tournament a lot easier, which, for me, would be nice. But, um, it also, I think, would be a pretty good use of that, it'd fit into the kind of what's going on over there a little bit, and it would be an area where, I mean, the biggest things would be, obviously, where there's irrigation across there that we'd need Trey to work on not irrigating that area, but it wouldn't be just a concrete patio, it'd be some road base, and most of it, some concrete, and then horseshoe pits. So, it's something just to think about for that area.
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, in regards to the splash park, I mean, you know, w- we're never gonna have anything nice if, if the attitude is, oh, it's a pain in the butt, let's not do it.
Yeah, yeah, totally agree.
So, I'd, I'd kind of like to, kind of get
So
change the attitude a little bit.
The size of the splash pad at the KOA, right, like, there's a bunch of kids that can use that splash pad, so, I mean, I don't think that we would need something even much bigger than that one, right? Have you guys seen the splash pad at the KOA?
I've drove by it, but I don't know how big it is.
It's, yeah, it is nice, not that big, and I don't think we need like a huge splash pad, I don't know that it would cost
No, I don't think it's
Five hundred grand? I think that would be an awesome spot for a splash pad, you know? Yeah, upkeep, yeah, I don't know.
But, I mean, the town's growing, I mean, we're, yeah, we are
Sorry, Trey.
getting more income, and, yeah, the town is growing.
I definitely think we should explore that more, just to, it, it could be simple, it's fun, that would be awesome to have here.
I guess, I mean, for budget, can you get us a rough ballpark cost on it?
Yeah. You bet.
Splash pad, and, uh, a rough cost on some horseshoe pits.
Could you not put those horseshoe pits over by where they're at now, by Stony Ridge Field, or no?
The only, there's not room where they're, where they're at right now, to put the number that you would need, and to put them down low, then it would, basically, you couldn't play the ball and stuff down there, so it would kind of take up that space. And that's why over there, I just, it just seemed like a good spot to put them, when we were walking around, looking at the parks.
Is there room for those and a splash pad?
I mean, there's parts of that area that aren't being used, I mean, it's, wouldn't be, there'd also be some room, if you wanted to just put them somewhere, have a splash pad somewhere, there's room in Veterans Park, too.
There is room in Veterans Park for that, you're right. Well, somewhere, so.
Got it, we've got it written down.
Cool.
Both of them. And since we have two members of the Subcommittee sitting up there, well, that'll be easy for us, put it on our list.
If one of them can make it.
I do think, though, with this list, that the citizens are gonna see visually things getting done, which they'll feel good about, I mean, to go from the parks we have to what those mockups could potentially be is a huge change.
I want people to like immediately notice that fall protection, too.
Yeah.
Like, that stuff just makes a part just so much nicer, so.
So, what do you do with the old playground equipment? Does it get sold, does it just get scrapped, I mean?
Um, the Eagles View one, probably scrapped. Um, we've, there's some issues up there with it, and I don't know what kind of liability there would be if we sold it and something broke, because that's the reason we're replacing it.
Right.
Is because it's about at the end of its useful life.
I was wondering if like on the government website, we sell vehicles on, if we could.
Oh.
We might be able to, if it, you know, I mean
Some church somewhere, somebody might want it.
Some church or daycare, or, who knows, might potentially.
Our suppliers said that there really isn't a, a market for it, but that means we couldn't try.
It's because they want to sell new stuff.
They want to sell new stuff.
Of course.
Yeah.
I mean, somebody's got it, some of it's gotta be decent.
She wouldn't give us a tray in, so I don't know.
I mean, yeah, give, yeah.
All right, good report.
Yeah.
Yes, very good report. And, oh, with the island
Trey's doing a great job.
Oh, with the island park, those signs, I don't, those would probably be expensive to update, maybe, but I've noticed that there are some businesses that are on those island park signs that don't exist anymore.
I, I, I saw that, too, when we were out, when I was out there last, um,
I mentioned that last year.
Trey and I, we'll have to
Yeah, yeah, you're talking about the one down by the river?
Yes.
It's got like, uh, whatever the old pizza place was on there.
Yeah, it has a pizza place, and Tim's Tools is on there, and, yeah.
All right.
What was that pizza place called again?
Monocostas.
Monocostas?
That's right, oh, okay.
Maybe we talk to some of the current businesses and see if they're interested in being on the sign and, for a fee, and then we can get the sign updated.
Hey, there you go.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. Good idea.
Good.
And then my only other thought was, you know, the gazebo, do we somehow, a- and I know the sculpture in the roundabout that didn't turn out too well, but do we have some sort of, not necessarily contest, but y- you know, something, you know, calling all architects or designers, we, we want thoughts on a new gazebo, just because
What's that?
I thought we were keeping the gazebo.
Well, I mean, in the future.
Oh, got, oh.
In the future.
Well, I, I, I kind of feel like that might be jumping the gun a little bit, I mean
You might, might tear that, might not even need it, because if, if the bands don't want to go up there, the gazebo's going.
Yeah, and, I mean, a n- a newer gazebo that's lower
A newer stage, or whatever we want to
Yeah, you know, I was just thinking something that, you know, would be here for fifty, sixty, a hundred years, so, you know, something, you know, something thought out with a designer or architect, or something like that, you know, is kind of a, you know, a, a legacy thing, something that's, you know, not done partway, you know, something that's, that's gonna be here, and it's, it, it makes, you know, the citizens, as well as staff and everybody, proud of, hey, you know, we, you know, we did that, so.
I think when we did this, uh, repair and improvement thing, we kind of thought that would probably be it for at least a couple of years. Um, I think it's too early to, to jump into that at this point, just because we don't really know what the reaction is gonna be to it.
It was, yeah, just a thought, just because
And I think there's a reason why it wasn't used, but we're gonna prove it with data, you know, and
So, that way, when we do, propose a change, we have you, we can tell people, this is why we're making the change, it's not just because we feel
Yeah.
But I agree with you, I think it'd be good to put it out to the community on something like that to design, you know
Yeah, I mean, whenever that time gets here.
Ask people how they feel about it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is the June twenty-twenty-two financial report, and I will turn this over to Treasurer Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we have fifty percent of the year that has gone by. Um, our sales tax and use tax are, um, ten and twelve percent respectively, over what we had anticipated. We're at sixty percent and sixty-two percent. Um, we're a little higher on our trash service fees, about two percent higher on our water service fees, about six percent higher on our wastewater service fees, and only one percent higher on our irrigation service fees than we had anticipated. Um, as far as revenues go, we're pretty well on track for all of our funds, short of senior housing still. Um, it, they just seem to pay us, uh, slowly. Um, and on our expenses, um, we're only over on the irrigation and the, um, victims assistance, and that is just because we've paid most of the expenses at the very beginning, um, that will even out towards the, uh, end of the year. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
I'll answer any questions for Treasurer Tucker.
Nope.
Me neither.
Thanks, Treasurer Tucker.
Amy, would, you know, one, one thing maybe we want to just highlight is, uh, the June sales tax collections were, uh, as you note in the chart, were off the charts. Again, I think that's
Yes, the highest that we've had since I've been here, for sure.
It's, uh, yeah. And then, um, this might be a good time for you It's a, yeah, and then um, this might be a good time for you, Amy, to talk briefly about. Our favorite time of the year that's fast approaching.
Uh-oh.
Budget. Um, I think it's Jeff's favorite time of the year, I don't know if it's my favorite time of the year, even though I love numbers, um. So we're wanting to start our first um, work session with you guys on April fifteenth, I'll be. I think Jeff sent out to me, go ahead.
August fifteenth.
Not April.
August, oh, August, thank you, um, August the fifteenth, I think Jeff sent an email to the mayor and the mayor pro tem. With um, the calendar, kind of trying to get feedback on whether everything's okay, um, so we will include that. Um, calendar in the uh, meeting in the packet for August the eighth.
Got it.
Sounds good.
We'll do it.
And the directors are already busy working on their budgets for next year, so.
Yes, I'm hoping to have a uh, preliminary um, budget worksheet with numbers in it. For you guys on, for the work session.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
It's Kyle's favorite time of year too.
Uh-huh, it's a good time.
It's a good time, yeah, for sure, uh, next up then is the mosquito surveillance trap update, and I'll turn this over to Director Foner.
Thank you, um, we have an agreement with Garfield County, the town participates in a mosquito surveillance program. Vector did seize control out of Broomfield, um, does the trapping and counting of mosquitoes. They also identify what type of mosquitoes that were trapped, um, usually when the trap counts get above a hundred. That's when they recommend a spray, and they usually do a spray around, the majority of the time it's around the wetlands, that's where one of the traps. Are, um, and maybe down the frontage road, um, that's our biggest mosquito areas. Um, you can see that around here, we have four main species of mosquitoes, um, you know, all of them are nuisance. But the claw, collects, kulex, sorry, variety, is the one that's known to carry the West Nile disease. Um, you know, and then I put on there, just for a little trivia, it's the, only the female that bites. Um, for mosquitoes, um, currently I get a weekly report through the summer that you see. On the other piece of paper, um, about the traps and the trap count, um, I share that with Jeff. And the mayor, and if any of you other trustees would like to see it, I can forward it on to you. I usually get them on a weekly basis, and I'll answer any questions.
Do they tell us if they're male or female, so we know if we're gonna get bit or not?
Nope.
I don't think that there's a, there, well, there's probably a way to tell, but.
Do we go out there and spray those areas then if the count's high, or do those guys spray for us?
It's part of the agreement, they come through and spray.
So these collection, like this is two days worth of collections, it looks like, is that what it, is that what that means at the top, seven, fif- seven five to seven seven?
Yeah, them are the dates that they collect out of the traps, that, for this report.
Yeah, yeah, right, okay, so they do it at the Come and Go, Colorado High School, okay, those two.
Those do the test site too.
Yep, and then when they send us the report, they send it for the whole county, so you can see. To, the test, the trap sites for Glenwood, Newcastle, parachute rifle, the ones they have through the county.
Do they ever give you information if people get West Nile in the area or in the state, or no?
No, it's, you can find it, but not with this, this is just trap count and type of mosquitoes.
I don't need a report, so thank you.
It's pretty exciting to read. Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, thank you for the update Trey, where I did the backlog discussion, so next up is administrator and staff comments. Turns over to Administrator Layman.
I'm gonna turn it right back to you, I don't have anything to report today.
I have one.
Oh.
The air, the reason it's warm in here, we found out at about four o'clock this afternoon that we lost a motor on a condenser. On one of our units on top of the building, so we're trying to find one to get put back in there and get it running again.
Call Keith.
Huh?
I said call Keith.
Well, we were lucky, we had, we had somebody here because they're doing the upgrades to the HVA system in this. In this building at the moment, so they were on site basically when we, it was like, man, it's getting hot in here, what'd you do? Didn't do nothing.
Oh, I was gonna ask, um, just briefly, I saw a thing in the Post Independent or whatever, it was kind of a video of with the. Is it the Crystal River, whatever, like, meeting with the Glen, you know, so anyway, the Colorado River was like super muddy the last week or so.
Yes.
Did that just wreak havoc on our water plan, or do we switch over to using more well water or?
Yes and yes.
Oh, got it, okay.
We did, we did switch to well water for a while.
Okay.
And, um, it's still.
Milk out there, man.
Yeah, and even when we switched to well water, that brings another set of problems in because. A lot of the times, the wells are higher in manganese and iron than the river.
Yeah.
So, we had, we did have a bad run of some brown water, because we had some issues at the plant that drew our tanks down. Lower than what we usually want.
Gotcha. How's it now, is it better?
What, the river, yeah, the river's a little better now.
Okay.
I think it's down to a hundred N T U or in that area instead of six hundred, or whatever it was.
Good grief.
Okay, alright, any other staff comments? Alright, so then we'll move on to board comments, and we'll start with uh, Trustee Flores.
Yeah, I had a couple, um, Trey, we thank Victor for his work on the Black Flow Program that he's doing. I know that that's a lot to take on, and then um, a couple of things, Garfield County kind of has opened up a conversation with their five percent inflation. Uh, raises they gave their, the county uh, employees, something I would like to get on our radar for our employees that's here. Still to be proactive, um, cause we're all losing ground with the inflation going up. Uh, another thing, I was talking to uh, Planner Chaney, and we both kind of agreed that uh, the meetings after ten o'clock. Everyone kind of lays is over, I don't feel any like methodical discussions, you know, like maybe some options could be maybe. Doing work sessions for these bigger, more important uh, um, developments, or carrying on the next meeting or. Um, just uh, some ideas out there, uh. I think that's all, that's all I, I had.
Okay. Alright, Trustee Britnall?
Um, just wanna put it on town's radar that uh, August twentieth is heyday, I know it's a ways out, but it's a good time to be in Veterans Park again. Have a parade, if there's any parade applicants, or if you know anybody that's, does crafts or food vendors, um, you can go on the town website. And there is a link to get to the um, applications and whatnot, so we're still looking for people.
Okay, Trustee Clausen?
Um, yeah, I just wanna say the, the parks look great, you know, and I know, you know, this town staff's really busy with everything. And I wanna thank them for all the hard work that they do, and I do want to mention that. You know, last week, I, I noticed that it looks like there is a leak at Demelby and Main. And I see that all of a sudden it's dry, and it does sound nitpicky of me, but I feel I need to bring it up. Because last year, when I was on P and Z, I noticed the same thing, and when I mentioned it, all of a sudden it was dry the next day. But then a month or so after, all of a sudden water's going down the gutter again, so it appears to me that. A valve was shut off for all of the trees on the drip, so, and the reason why I bring it up is because. We ask our citizens to conserve water and not to waste water, so I feel the town shouldn't do that either. So I, I kind of feel rather than just shutting it off for a short period of time and then turning it back on, I feel we should fix it.
It's on the schedule to be fixed, and we do have it shut off, we turn it on every other day for watering on the watering schedule. And we let it run, so Come and Go can water, we can water the park behind Come and Go, the leak is actually, it doesn't affect the trees. I believe, and then it's on the schedule, but we're just waiting to get to it, so that's how we're handling it right now.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Trustee Seifer?
Uh, I've got a lot to say, we had, got a lot accomplished tonight, really kind of uh, this board, we had six different people and six different opinions. On a lot of things, and we got a lot accomplished, and everybody, it all turned out good, so um, thank everybody for their comments. And keep on plugging.
Good, alright, Mayor Pro Tem?
No comments.
Okay, um, I'm gonna jump back to Trustee Flores's long meetings, um, I think we all agree, yeah, have, after ten o'clock, we do. Get tired, um, with our charter, we have to do the motion to go past ten o'clock, so. If you ever feel like nothing productive is gonna happen after ten o'clock, we can vote no on that motion. It doesn't just have to be unanimous, go ahead and continue the meeting, so, um, I do like the idea, I think some of these bigger things would have been nice. To work through in work sessions instead of these meetings, um, I don't mind doing an extra meeting every couple of weeks. To make it easier on everybody, um, with that being said, I do wanna thank the staff for all their work on Rosalinda. Cause while we're in here working with them for a couple hours at a meeting, staff is working with these guys continually between meetings, so. Um, thanks for all the hard work you guys have been putting in there, uh, and then the only thing I have is. Uh, I want town staff to pay attention when they're driving town vehicles, um, if you cruise around town, there is a ton of. Uh, Hollywood roll-throughs at stop signs and, and town vehicles speeding, texting and driving. Um, these guys should be out there, they should be the example of how we want our citizens to drive in town, so. Just make sure you're driving a town vehicle as you should drive a town vehicle, other than that, I've got nothing. Next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Alright, motion by Mayor Pro Tem to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Trustee Britnall, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Alright.
Alright, thank you, everybody.